Good evening. I would like to call tonight's meeting of the Tacoma Park City Council to order. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Circe.
Here.
Councilmember Fulcher.
Present.
Councilmember Dibala.
Present.
Councilmember Gibson.
Here.
Councilmember Siemens.
Present.
Councilmember Hansak.
Present.
Councilmember Small.
Chilling, never ending, in a place to be.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Just as a point of information, the council met today at 6:30 in an administrative function session regarding the city manager search. And we are convening our regular session now. The administrative function sessions are closed to the public. And so on tonight's agenda, we will have three items. There's a voting session on a resolution approving the closure of Ann Street for a Hispanic Heritage Month event on October the 22nd. We also have two work sessions, I'm sorry, three work sessions this evening. One on the introduction to the Balancing Act software, the budget calendar for FY 2025, as well as a review of council priorities. In terms of our upcoming calendar, just getting myself organized, bear with me. On Wednesday, October the 18th, the council, actually, I should say, on Sunday, October the 15th through Tuesday, October the 17th, is the Maryland Municipal League Fall Conference. So a number of us will be attending that event. On Wednesday, October the 18th, the city council will meet at its regular time at 7:30. We'll start with a voting session on a resolution adopting the FY 25 budget schedule. And we will also have three work sessions that evening. The first is the Public Space Management Plan Report on Public Engagement and Draft Resolution Adopting the Plan. The second is Housing Annual Report for FY 2023. And then we will also have a work session on the update on the city manager search. On Wednesday, October the 25th, we will have our regular meeting at 7:30. It will start with a voting session on a resolution adopting the Public Space Management Plan, as well as a work session on the review of facilities regulations. As a reminder for everyone, on Saturday, October the 28th, is Monster Bash. So I hope everyone will wear their costumes and come out and celebrate. And Tuesday, October the 31st, is Halloween. And then on Wednesday, November the 1st, the city council will meet at 7:30. We will have a proclamation recognizing 10 years of the 16- and 17-year-old voting and 30 years of non-citizen voting in Tacoma Park, as well as a presentation from the Montgomery County Department Review, Department, I'm sorry, presentation from Montgomery County staff on the Montgomery County Development Review Process, as well as a work session on reprogramming Direct Cash Assistance ARPA funds. The program ends October the 31st. And we are tentatively slated for a quarterly financial report for the first quarter of the fiscal year. And so with that, I'm going to move on to public comments. Do we have any public comments on voting items tonight? And just as a reminder, the voting item for this evening is a resolution approving the closure of Ann Street for a Hispanic Heritage Month event on October the 22nd. Do we have any public comments on voting items? Okay. All right. Do we have any virtual public comments? Wonderful. Okay. Do we have any general public comments tonight? General public comments?
Oops, there we go.
Gotcha.
Good evening. My name is Karen Elrich, and my home is in Ward 5. The following presentation is fictional. The names have been changed to protect the guilty. Hi, Gordon. This is Sharon. How are you? Did you see the city council had another closed meeting about the junction? Gordon, really? What could they be talking about so secretively? Sharon, perhaps they're working on NDC with a new project. I'm just guessing, but it could be. Gordon, hmm. Hey, Wanda. This is Gordon. How are you? Did you hear the council is meeting in private to negotiate a new project with NDC? Wanda, really? Is it going to be a new attempt at getting the old project built, but even bigger? Gordon, well, I don't really know. It's all so secretive, but it could be. Hi, Trevor. This is Wanda. How are you? Have you been paying attention to how many secret meetings the council has had on the junction? They want NDC to build the old project on steroids. Trevor, you mean the one that has 10 buildings, 15 stories high, and will take over the co-op and create daily traffic jams throughout the city at every intersection? Wanda, well, not really all that, but I do believe they might be bringing back the original plan that wasn't approved. Trevor, hmm. Trevor, to his local listserv, I'm appalled that our city is going to start the whole NDC and the junction plan and make it even bigger, and what do we got? We're going to have to start organizing. Transparency. This could be the scenario that will play out if there isn't transparency in our government. I know that some things have to be done in closed meetings, but I also believe the procedure of a closed meeting should include a report to the public. Please let me know if I'm mistaken. If I am correct, I respectfully look forward to all those reports on all of the closed meetings you all have been having. Thank you.
Do we have any other general public comments?
For those of you who prefer the rational to the humorous, Tom Gagliardo, I live at 107 Hodges Lane in the Hodges Heights neighborhood. I am, as I frequently remind you, your neighbor. And if my count is correct, in the past several weeks, you have conducted three closed sessions concerning Tacoma Junction and Neighborhood Development Corporation. For present purposes, let's consider that closing those sessions complied with the Maryland Open Meeting Act. As you know, Section 3-306(c)(2) of the Act requires, and I quote, and this is a verbatim quote from the Maryland Attorney General's Open Meeting Act Manual, quote, "After the closed session, the public body must disclose in the minutes of the next open session information that discloses: one, what topics were actually discussed; two, who attended the closed session; and three, what actions the public body took." We know there are no written minutes for any of the open, of the closed meetings. Gets harder and harder to read on this phone. Excuse me, I'm sorry. We know there are no minutes of the closed, of those closed meetings. And I may have missed something, but if there's been public disclosure at your open sessions, I missed it. It would be good if you would repeat it, repeat what happened again tonight. Finally, regardless of what transpired in the closed sessions, you owe, as our elected officials, sharing information with the Tacoma Park community. And these are matters that are not subject to closed meetings. One, what, if anything, is NDC proposing? Two, what are you, as the mayor and council, advocating or promoting? Three, what is your analysis of the impact of any NDC proposal on the co-op and other junction businesses? Now, you can meet in closed session as many times as you're permitted to do, but I'll quickly point out that the law never requires a meeting to be closed. It only gives you the option of doing so. And the three items that I just mentioned are not topics that can be discussed in a closed meeting.
Thank you. Do we have any other general public comments this evening?
Hi, Mary Jane Machuie again. I started Parents of Special Needs Adults in 2015. And I'm sorry for coming again, and I wish I didn't have to, but not, nothing has been done to help us. Nothing. You have, Mr. Siemens came to frontline with me in June, I think it was, but frontline said, promised, we get all these promises. It was a great place. But then they, they never called me back. I called them, they didn't return my call. That's the story of our life. Nobody wants us. There's a TV show I like, Everybody Hates Chris. Well, I sort of feel everybody hates us. I mean, please, we have a lobbyist. Why can't you all tell the lobbyist to lobby for us at the state level? We are important. I mean, I don't know how much you're paying the lobbyist, but at least 10% of that time, can it be devoted to us? Please, just 10%? I'm begging you. 10% of the 100% time you spend with the lobbyist? Please, please, we need help. We come in all races, all sexual orientations. We're Palestinians, Israelis, we're, we're, we come in all, we are forced to unite people. Think of it as that way. We are forced to unite people. Think of it, that, in that positive light. Thank you very much. Please. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Machuie. Do we have any other general public comments? Come on down, Arthur.
Arthur David Olson, Herbie Hancock Avenue, for those of you who prefer boring to either rational or humorous. On the budget calendar, a new acting city manager, a new city manager in prospect, and a majority new city council are an ideal time for big changes in the city's budget process. In April, the council received a 292-page proposed budget that served as the basis for its vote in May. The city's website now has a 395-page fiscal year 2024 approved budget. The roughly 33% increase in length is not due to a 33% increase in font size. The documents are organized differently and have different levels of detail. Calling a document that the council has never voted on an approved budget is not best practice. At a minimum, the council might direct that the adopted budget be changed to the budget as finalized by the city manager. I hope, though, that the council will do more, directing the city manager to initially provide the council with the budget in its final form, so that we can truly have an adopted budget. I recognize this will increase staff work at the start of the process. I note that it will reduce staff work at the end of the process. While the city does need to submit its property tax rate to the county in mid-May, the council has until the end of June, the end of the budget year, to finalize the budget. I hope the budget calendar will have a delay, even if just a week, between tax rate approval and budget approval, as a way of reminding this and future councils of the available flexibility. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other general public comments this evening? Do we have anyone online? Okay, great. So we're going to move on to council comments. Councilmember Small?
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to just begin by saying I think I may be pushing the time limit a little because there are a couple of things that I'd like to discuss. One thing is that I'm heartened and thankful that there are residents of Ward 6 that are here in the meeting. Oftentimes, the concentration of people from other places is so great that the cacophony of that noise doesn't necessarily singularly focus on these issues. And so it's exciting that you guys came with an idea and that you're not just a prop for what I'm about to say. But I wanted to talk about a couple of things. It's ironic, some of the statements that were made about transparency, process, and neighborliness. And so some of those things all, for what I have to say, are going to have to do with good public policy and public safety. And so I'm still kind of feeling, type of way, about the way the whole process of misinformation and disinformation of the minor master plan kerfuffle went down. And I was, if anyone will recall at any point during that, I was really kind of shaken by that whole thing. The council will tell you that I pounded flesh on my disappointments internally. But the one thing that really bothered me about the whole process is that, to my knowledge, one of the great things about Tacoma Park is that we have the most astute political actors in the country that live here. Some of them work in a state level, some of them work at the federal level, some of them just do politics, and some of them work for the county. But I would expect that the people who work for the county would be fair dealers in the process. And I got to say, to find out that it is allegedly true that the county executive was the person who is claiming the talking points that were promulgated by that group of people is really sort of a shame because they were so poorly done, number one. And all they did was really confuse and frustrate a process. And so I don't think it's cool when people come in and accuse us of not doing things when I know what they are doing. And so with regard to being neighbors, I find often that when we're talking about being neighbors, the issues that face neighbors who are under the stress of dealing with a difficult issue that has got long-term problems that could be addressed by public policy or the county, or a call, or people who lack or desire activities to happen south of a certain area. There's a public policy arena could, you know, think about those things. Or even the reality of having a socioeconomic environment that is profoundly changed by the policies around us that doesn't acknowledge the potential criminality, the potential socioeconomic stress, the reality of the ease of transferring between jurisdictions and the difficulties in getting those jurisdictions to cooperate efficiently. A lot of that is not on us. It's on the county level, or it's on other places that would like to pretend that they are, that it's important to them to be good neighbors, or to be aware of what's happening in their community. And so when I think about home rule and the importance of when the home rule statute happened in Maryland, and I encourage people to read it, part of the reason for that was is that the aristocratic notion of maintaining a government since the inception of the crown here did not articulate the needs of the people who were down here. And so they made cities. And that's sort of why we're up here. And so when we talk about community, and when we talk about those things, I want people to understand that there are people who live in this neighborhood who have issues, who have to do outlandish things with their county, or with their county people to get them to come and look, but they also have to do outlandish things up here to get people to even think about providing solutions to long-term problems. And that's frustrating to me, and I'm going to close with this because I got to tell everybody something that happened to me. On Saturday, I got a postcard in the mail, and it said, "Ward 6, Councilperson 0, City Staff 1." And I have my own theories about why that would occur, or whatever else. But one of the great ironies about that to me is, I used to be a city staffer. I kept people in jobs. I've done more work than a lot of people. And it's not fair to think that people who have long-term problems, that people like to fluff around about and pretend that they're solving, are getting them solved. And so if I am difficult on this day, or if I send some emails again, which I plan to start trying to email staff to inquire about things that are public policy related, it's going to be because we have to wait until the end of the year to have people finally have enough time and effort and problems to have the opportunity to come down here. And so I thank you for being here. I can't wait to talk to you about the things that you talked to Sheriff Butler about, about our solutions. Because when I try to say things about how we need to have cross-disciplinary things, I don't get the same response from Chief Duval. But now he's going to know that you guys are out here trying to do something about our neighborhood. And I appreciate that. And maybe Public Safety and Public Works will think about the fact that you want more signage, and that we've been talking about these kinds of things for 11 years.
Councilmember Dibala?
Well, taking this in a completely different direction, because I did not get a postcard, thankfully, this week from anybody about city staff. So I just wanted to say that Faith in Blue was a wonderful event, and I team-built a Lego dragon slash bird, and everybody was really happy that adults were cooperating, not throwing Legos at each other. I had a really good time. I want to thank the, thank the police staff for putting it together. And I wanted to say that I will be at the MML meetings coming up Sunday through Tuesday. So if you are in Ward 2 and try to reach out to me, and I don't get right back to you, I might, it might take a little bit. And that's it for me.
Councilmember Gibson?
Yes, two sort of similar events, one past and one in the future in Ward 3. Last week, I guess it was Saturday, we had about, close to two dozen people that took out invasives in what area, a park, municipal, a county-owned park, sometimes called Waldo's Woods. But a good group of folks spent a couple hours, first in the rain and then the sun, doing good work pulling out invasive plants. And I want to thank, in particular, the, one of the organizers of that event was FONT, which is Friends of Native Trees in Tacoma. A really good job to them and to all the people that came out. And then this coming Saturday, I'd like to suggest that there's another park that's worth visiting, that's Spring Park on Saturday, and there will be a tree hug and native plant exchange. So that's 10 to 1 this Saturday. Please join us. We have some great assets in our community, natural assets, we need to take care of them and learn about how, and learn about how to better take care of our, our natural environment. Thank you.
Councilmember Fulcher?
Thank you. Just wanted to make sure that people are aware that there's going to be field restoration going on at Bell Ziegler Park starting the week of October 16th. And this will mean that that park will be, the fence will be around the field, and we won't be able to use that turf from October through mid-March, so that that field has time to recover. Also coming up, the Village of Tacoma Park is hosting a flu and COVID-19 vaccine on October 18th at the Long Branch Community Center, which is at 8700 Piney Branch Road in Silver Spring. From 9:00 AM till 1:00 PM, just as a reminder, it is time to get your COVID vaccines and your flu vaccines so that you can ensure a healthy you can ensure a healthy holiday season with your family. I know that I didn't get to do Thanksgiving last year because we all got something, and so learn from my mistakes. Actually, I had already gotten my vaccines too. But anyways, do everything you can to be together with the people that you love. And then also, you're invited to join with our city staff. The Rain Plan and Low Impact Development Center has a stormwater runoff calculator to present to our community, and so that is on October 26th at 7:00 p.m. via Zoom. We can all learn how to use that calculator for ourselves, which sounds interesting. Thank you.
Councilmember Hansak?
Thank you. A few announcements and then a couple thoughts. One is, this Friday, up at Long Branch, this isn't a city-hosted event, but it is right at the edge of the city, there'll be a Long Branch Movie Night at the Flower Avenue Urban Park, starting at 6:00. There'll be music, and at 7:00 is the movie. I think they're going to be showing Encanto. On Saturday, I have helped be part of organizing an event down on Maple Avenue, but the host for the event is Maple Community Association, and Terry Siemens has also been engaged in that. I hope that many of you will be able to come out. They're going to close off Lincoln, and there'll be moon bounce, free food. It should be a lot of fun. Thanks, Terry, for introducing me to them. And also Lunch and Learn is contributing to that event. And then on November 7th, I know that's a little ways off, but I just want people to mark their calendars, at 6:00, there'll be the Purple Line Long Branch Fall Community Advisory Team Meeting. And again, I think this is one of those really important things to have on our calendar right now as we're moving forward on the Purple Line development, for, you know, especially for Wards Five and Ward Six. And then I want to get back to the public comments tonight as one of our new council I'm finding it really hard, as a newer council member, to hear the distrust that is so strong in the closed sessions. I feel I was democratically elected for my good judgment, and I'm not going to speak for the rest of my colleagues, but I'm sure they feel the same, especially our newer council members. And, you know, it's really hard to stand up here and say, "Trust me," because that, you know, there's a deficit of trust, first of all, out there for all of us. And the job of residents, as well as us, as council members who are democratically elected, is to help build trust and accountability in governance. That is what we're here to do on our behalf. And I just want to say, you know, that if it strikes you that when we newer council members step into closed sessions, we ask ourselves every day whether this is the right thing to do, I hope that you would think to yourselves that we are using our very good judgment, consulting our legal resources, and concluding that, in fact, this is the right thing to do. It is ethical, it is right, and it's the right choice, and there may be things that we just can't share with the public for various reasons, and at some point, it will become apparent. So I guess I'm just saying, let's work hard on our trust deficit and ask ourselves, what is the role of democratically elected council members who have had more votes than ever before because of the way our ballots have gone out to every household across the city? I hope that you can have a little bit more trust in all of us. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Hansak. Councilmember Siemens?
Thank you, Mayor. I, too, was at the Lego event that the Police Department put on Saturday down on Maple Avenue at Sligo Creek. It was, I just wanted to compliment the chief and his people for an excellent, an excellent event. And it was remarkable timing that the event started about an hour after it stopped raining, and it was a beautiful, beautiful day at that point. I think the turnout was incredible. I know that they've held similar events in the past year and not had the turnout that they had this time. It was, it was very good. I know all the young people had fun, and I saw some council members having fun building things, too, including dinosaurs. Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you all for your comments tonight. Thank you, Councilmember Hansak. You took the words right out of my mouth. You know, it's important that we run a transparent government. And I think that it is, without repeating what Councilmember Hansak has said, you know, we, I ask myself, and I ask our legal counsel every time, we decide to close a meeting, whether or not it's appropriate to do so. And I stand behind the decisions that we've made most recently regarding closing the meetings that we've had. At the opening of each of the open sessions following those meetings, communicate again that the purpose of us having these closed sessions is to receive legal consult. And so I just would like for members of the community, instead of spreading speculation to trust, and you can hold me accountable, because everything that is done in the dark will come to light, right? Hold me accountable. Yeah. Say, "Talisha, Talisha, you did me wrong. I'll take it." But I am asking for everyone right now to trust that this council is working in the best interests of the city. And again, when we are able to make any announcements regarding the NDC project, we will do so. But I do want to make sure that folks are not contributing to speculation unless serves. And instead, just holding us to, and I respect, you know, folks that have come in today, just saying, "Hey, we want to know what's going on, and whenever you could tell us what's going on, tell us." And you have my word that that is exactly what I will do. But I do don't, but I do think it's important for us to make sure that we're not spreading mistrust through speculation. So I have a bunch of other things that I have to send my thanks to. I was unfortunately unable to make it to the Faith in Blue event. So sorry about that, but I'm so grateful to the Police Department for doing that. On Friday, I was able to attend a Sustainable Maryland Grant Award Ceremony that we received. Tacoma Park received a 2023 Sustainable Communities Environmental Stewardship Grant funded by PEPCO in the amount of $10,000 for our Stuart Armstrong Pollinator Arboretum Project. And so I was able to speak at that event, as well as I was joined by Anna John, who is our wonderful Public Works person who applied for the grant, and so it's a super great opportunity to interact with Anna and also to really hear about all of the different projects that are happening in our region that are being funded through these PEPCO grants in Sustainable Maryland. So I just want to continue to send my sincerest appreciation to PEPCO and to Sustainable Maryland for creating these funding opportunities that are really important for local communities and organizations to advance environmental goals. Also, want to give a special thanks to Councilmember Siemens for facilitating the Benefit Corporations event that was held on Monday. It was a wonderful event. I learned a lot, and was appreciative of Councilmember Siemens' leadership in working with organizers to bring off that event successfully. So thank you so much, Councilmember Siemens, for your role in that. Also, I will be at the, I gotta pull my calendar out because there's a lot going on this weekend. So I will be at MML this weekend. I am hoping to stop by Spring Park to hug a tree. And I am definitely looking forward to the Maple Avenue event that is happening as well. And yes, I think that is it. All right. Well, that is all I have. And so with that, I will turn things over to our Acting City Manager, proud Papa, Mr. Eubanks. Welcome back.
Thank you, Mayor.
We are begging for baby photos.
Baby photos are coming. But it is great to be back, and thank you, everyone, council, city staff. Even got a couple emails from city residents for all your well wishes, your gifts, your cards, your thoughts. My wife and I, Allison, really appreciate it. So thank you. And I want to give a special thank you to Andrew for holding down the fort. I had full faith and confidence in him, and he did exactly what I thought he would do in the interim, did a wonderful job of keeping things running and marshaling things forward, things forward. So thank you, Andrew, for all your hard work. I know well how hard it is to do it by yourself, and you did an excellent job.
I have a new appreciation for what you've been doing for the last few weeks. Welcome back. No one's more excited than I am.
I hear you. So that said, I do have just a few, just a few updates. From HCD, they'd like to let everyone know that there's a renovation to Jessup Blair Park. This is being conducted by Montgomery's Park, excuse me, Montgomery Parks, and it's beginning with an online survey available beginning in October, October 31st, in which is seeking community input on the renovation of Jessup Blair. At 15 acres, Jessup Blair is the largest park in downtown Silver Spring, is located near the D.C. line, bordered by Georgia Avenue and the Transit Railroad tracks, Blair and Jessup Blair. The park currently has a playground, soccer field, and several other large attractions, and planners are hoping to increase the use of the space by developing a park for all that appeals to a diverse group of park users with varying interests, abilities, and ages. So if you are interested, although this is outside of our jurisdiction, if you're interested in participating in the survey, there's just a quick 15-question survey, and a link to the survey will be provided in the council city manager's comments. Also from HCD, regarding the tenant opportunity to purchase program, HCD has just recently released two RFQs. The first RFQ seeks responses from qualified nonprofit, emission-oriented, for-profit developers with strong affordable housing track records and demonstrated experience in acquiring, owning, operating, and rehabilitating and developing quality rental and/or homeownership housing with affordability covenants. Those interested in serving in a pool of qualified parties to serve as a signee or designee as a part of the city's right of first refusal should respond to the RFP or RFQ. The second RFQ will seek qualified nonprofit technical assistant providers to assist local tenant associations with organizing and identifying the feasibility of purchasing their properties through the TOPOL program. And these are both related to the housing division's initiative to kind of expand both the ability of residents to purchase their buildings, but also make our existing policies more useful by creating this pool of developers who, when the city has the right of first refusal, which comes up fairly often, that not only does the city have the opportunity to do business itself, but can assign those rights to someone else more qualified, in most cases, to take on any opportunities that may come our way. So those are open and available, and they remain open until January 2024. And then finally, on Saturday, October 14th, the community center back parking lot will have, is anticipated to be closed. This is due to some work from Washington Gas related to the library and the relocation of the community center utility services. There is some expected rain Saturday, so the rain date is Monday, October 16th. If that date should change, we'll certainly put out the notices via our communication department. And just to Councilmember Small, it is unfortunate to hear that that notice was sent to you. We are in the process of investigating, and should it be determined that it has come from a city staff person, we will take the appropriate action. So thank you for letting us know. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Acting City Manager, Eubanks. Okay, and so now we're going to move into our voting session. And I apologize, Councilmember Siemens has just passed my favorite peppermint candy. We have a good thing going here. I'm just going to ask you not to disrupt what we have going on. All right. So tonight, we have one voting item. On the agenda, the resolution approving the closure of Ann Street for Hispanic Heritage Month event on October 22nd. Would someone like to move the resolution authorizing temporary closure? Thank you.
Second.
Councilmember Small moves, Councilmember Siemens second. Are there any points for discussion before the vote?
Mayor, I did have one point of discussion, and it's related to Ann Street as a potential closure and long-term closure. They are doing some work over there right now, and so you can at least envision what it may theoretically be, because it's just yet another place in my ward where there's just a bunch of traffic stuff being done that nobody really gets to know about. But I do think that there's both a long-term potential for that area, and I'm curious about if there are any sorts of concerns about public safety over there for that festival, given the traffic that is in that area and some of the concerns people have raised about the proximity to liquor stores and things like that.
Thank you, Councilmember Small. And I will pose this question to Acting City Manager, Eubanks, if we can just confirm with our HCD staff who've been in engagement with the Tacoma-Lane and Crossroads Development Authority regarding the need for any police presence during this event. I know that often, when there are street closure events on Ann Street, we typically have a couple of officers there. To Councilmember Small's point, I know that sometimes during the farmer's market, we may have some people that may be under the influence that come through. So if we could just confirm with the chief that there will be, that there has been a request, whether or not there's been a request for police presence, and whether or not we anticipate having any police presence there?
Sure. The event itself did go through our typical process, which involves review by the Police Department as well as Public Works. They haven't commented in any way or had raised any concerns, but we will follow up to see if there's going to be any additional police presence. The no parking signs will be placed, the street barricades will all be placed. So our typical kind of response to street closures along Ann Street will be in effect, but I do appreciate the question, and we'll look into it.
Thank you.
Thank you, David. I appreciate that. There's just the foot traffic and what people are willing to carry openly while they're doing it is just changed a little bit, so.
All right. So are there any other comments, questions, before we move to vote? Councilmember Gibson? No worries. All right, seeing no lights. All those in favor of the resolution authorizing temporary closure of Ann Street in support of the 2023 Tacoma-Lane and Crossroads Development Hispanic Heritage Month event, please say aye.
Aye.
Do you have any opposed? Any abstain? All right. Thank you very much. Now, we're going to move into our work sessions. The work, the first work session on the agenda is the introduction to Balancing Act. And so with that, I will turn this discussion over to Acting Deputy City Manager, vote it.
Thank you, Mayor. So this item's before you tonight because there's been a lot of discussion around the budget calendar and later that we'll be having later on, as well as council priorities, and what your needs for community engagement and feedback will be, what sort of tools may be in your toolkit in order to have that, receive that feedback and have those conversations. So tonight, we have Balancing Act, we have the, our vendor here to provide a brief demo. Our Budget and Accounting Manager, Mr. Koali, is also online, who can also brief you all. Generally speaking, this is, you know, we're in year two of a three-year contract, so this is, again, this is a tool that we've signed up for, it's a tool we have, and, you know, that we'd love some feedback on sort of the best ways to use it. So I want you to have, understand both what the strengths of this tool will be, what some of the limitations may be. And it's, just so you know, in its current form, we've provided And and it's, just so you know, in its current form, we've provided some very sort of some baseline standards around the council priorities, just sort of listing them out, as well as in the the sliding scale tool that you'll see as well. There's a number of feedback that senior leadership team had most recently that have not been incorporated into this tool, but those certainly, those changes can occur following the presentation tonight. So with that, Mr. Koalli.
Thank you, Andrew. Councilmembers, as Andrew mentioned, we've been working with Balancing Act to develop a tool that could help engage residents in the budget process, get their feedback, inform them, and try to get them to understand the trade-offs the city has to make in balancing their budget. So we have three modules. We would like Balancing Act, we've asked Balancing Act to present to the council, and we have a representative from Balancing Act, Garrett, who is going to present the software, just show the functionality and how it can be used to to help with the budget process and get residents' feedback and improve, you know, transparency of the process. So Garrett, I'm going to hand it over to you. Take it away.
Perfect. Thank you. So I'm going to go ahead and share my screen. Let's see here. Do you see my screen here?
Will you see?
Excellent. Perfect. So, yes, so the the city has access to three tools currently, the budget simulation tool, the prioritize tool, and the taxpayer receipt tool. So what we're looking at here is the budget simulation tool. So here, this tool can be used for internal stakeholder discussions around the budget or external with residents. So here, this is what the resident would be greeted with. This is what we call an entry screen. This just provides some instructions on how to use the tool, set the background, and even provide some links surrounding the budgets, council priorities, and all that. And then as the user navigates and clicks continue, you are able to configure and customize certain questions. So currently, in this draft version that we have, we just have questions like, are you a resident, yes or no? What city council ward do you live in, one, two, three, four, five, or six? And then also, we can collect postal codes. So I'm going to drop mine in. I click Go, it drops in that area. I obviously don't live on the mountain, so I can drag and drop, place it into the neighborhood where I live in the foothills, I'm in the Denver, Colorado area, and then I click Continue. And this one was required, so let me put that in there. So essentially, what we're doing here is we're taking that budget book, the 500-page budget book, and putting it into a nice virtual simulation for residents to navigate the consequences, the constraints, and the context just surrounding the the budget process here. So, and again, these are all just, these are exact numbers, but in this example, we're showing a deficit, $1.2 million deficit, and the job of the resident is to get this balance bar to, or this budget to balanced or in a surplus before they submit. So here, on the right-hand side, we're able to look at expenditures and spending by the city, and you can categorize these however you'd like, but for this draft version, we have categories like public safety, infrastructure, community services, general government, and so forth. And as you can see, I can hover over and click on the more info to learn more about what housing and community development entails. There's a nice modal that appears with descriptor of that, and then in the more details, you can add links, more more text, what have you. So now, the fun thing is being able to actually participate and kind of promote my priorities within. So let's say I'm in a deficit here, so maybe I'm willing to reduce housing and community development services by a little bit. And you can see, as I click the minus button, I'm reducing spending and the balance bar moves. So maybe I've reduced it to this point. So now, I'm unwilling to maybe make any more cuts to the spending side, so maybe I have to look at the revenue side. So here, on the revenue side, again, just a draft, we have taxes, licenses and fees, other revenues, and suggestion boxes. So here, what we've opened up here for engagement are taxes surrounding property tax rate change. So the purpose of this tool is to really make the budget more digestible. So when I increase the property tax rate change, it's not very digestible to me, even who's someone who operates in this realm, what that entails to my pocket at the end of the day as a taxpayer. So what we've done here is included secondary impacts, as you can see these green boxes here. So when I increase the property tax rate change by one cent, I've increased it by one cent, the impact on median value homes in the city will actually be a $63 impact. So let's say I've increased it to the point of I'm either balanced or in a surplus, and I get to keep spending levels at the levels that I wish to keep them at, to keep all the expenditures and community services that I love. So I'm willing to increase the property tax rate change by two cents, which is $125 added to my bill, and maybe that sounds like a great deal for me, keeping all the services. So that is high level, what the tool can do. You show your revenue, show your spending, and we can add more subcategories, more categories, or any other interaction points for this tool.
Garrett, before we move on from this tool, do you mind pressing submit? I just wanted to show the additional questions we have if you go past this point.
Yep. So down here, now that I am in balanced or in a surplus, I can actually click Submit. And then these, again, these are all configurable, customizable, it looks like. Again, we're asking what city council ward did they live in, because I didn't answer it at the very beginning, age range, gender identification, race, annual personal income, housing status, et cetera. So that is the budget simulation tool. Any questions with this tool in particular, before I move on to the other two?
Councilmember Gibson?
Yeah, just a question of granularity. I think you said, sir, that you could do sub, subgroups or something like that. So so what level of granularity can we can we have? I think that these are obviously, well, not obviously, they're very broad. So for example, police, we have personnel costs, we have police vehicles, et cetera. I mean, just as an example.
Yeah, and I would I would encourage the city to go deeper into that engagement. So for example, I'm just going to pull up another example here. Here, let's go into parks and rec. So here, not only does parks and rec entail park maintenance and parks, I can continue to add more to these, but here, what I what I really encourage the city to do is use the scenario question feature, and this is actually where you can ask, and I'll zoom in here actually for you guys. This is where you can ask specific questions related to line items within the budget. So here, it's saying, should the hours of the rec center be expanded so that they're open later at night? No, is the status quo? Or am I willing to have the rec center close at 4:00 PM, which would reduce spending by $400,000 to potentially go back into a surplus? So to answer your question, yes, you can have as many subcategories as you want, and even the categories could be tied to strategic goals, strategic plan items, and you can ask not only the plus and minus interaction point, but you can ask, actually ask specific questions that are tied to dollar amounts as well. So I would encourage the deep engagement, but it's just, it's how far we'd like to take the simulation tool. And one can, one version can look differently internally as you develop the budget yourselves, and then another version can look more digestible for the public, so it could look different, too. It's a good question.
Councilmember Gibson, do you have another question?
Yes, yes, if others don't, just to, I guess, one of the things that's helpful is comparatives over time. So it is, does this tool allow for any comparisons to, for example, the public safety budget is, shows as 8.9 million, what was it last year, what was it a year before?
Yeah, that's a great, another detailed item that I would love to put into the simulation as well. So one way to do that is really demonstrate it through maybe the more info button here, so the context, so when I click the more info here, maybe we can have some sort of graphic or even just text that says, in 2022, it was approved for X amount. In 2023, this is the proposed amount. In 2024, this was the adopted amount. So we could provide that information here nice cleanly in the context as well.
Thank you.
Councilmember Siemens?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for this presentation. I, it looks exciting. It gives a lot of, a lot of ability to interact with the community and get, get more opinions about what we want to see, what we as a community want to see in the budget. My concern is kind of twofold. Number one, the population of this application with data that is, it's not a one-time thing, it's a, it's kind of an ongoing thing from year to year, and the getting this, this detail in here, especially when we're looking at and saying, well, let's break it down further, let's, let's break things down to a, to an even more informative level. I'm guessing that requires some manual intervention to get the the data in the format necessary to populate this tool. And then the other, the second concern I have is the price of the tool itself with the, and, you know, the cost of changes that we've already heard some council members envisioning. It looks, I'm just wondering about, you know, what's the real price for using this product, not just what is the off-the-shelf price?
Yeah. Yeah, great question. So I think it was mentioned earlier, the the city's in a multi-year agreement with Balancing Act, and to that point, I think the this tool has been budgeted in for those for those years. There's a lot of great benefit to this tool because you actually can launch as many as you want within the three-year span. So my recommendation is, I love to see when cities use it for internal development, use it for the proposed budget, and then use it again for the adopted budget. So there isn't a price increase or decrease for the amounts of time or amount of licenses or amount of simulations you push out there. So that's unlimited, and we actually encourage you to use more. So there's no incremental cost. The cost of what the city has agreed to, which I don't have the dollar amount in front of me, but it's it's locked in for the three years.
Sorry, it's 5,800.
Oh, there you go.
5,800 annually.
5,800.
Right. For the, for the three modules you're demonstrating.
And this is just module one.
Okay, and and so as some of the expansions that Councilmember Gibson was envisioning, those could be implemented with the current version and not for an additional development price?
Exactly, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and year-to-year, year-to-year, it's very easy to update the numbers. It's a one-click button, duplicate the simulation, and then we just update the numbers manually, but that is my support with the city is baked into the costs that have already been set forth, so no incremental costs.
All right, so and I was kind of refreshing to hear you said that is at, it's your nickel that's going to get these numbers into the system.
Yeah, yeah, so I, I'm the Director of Customer Success. I've launched hundreds of simulations with cities, small and large, and, yeah, I love this tool because I see the wins. So I'm working really closely with Ron and the rest of the team moving forward just to, just to get this out there.
You have allayed my fears. Thank you.
Awesome.
I'm going to use my mayoral privilege to jump, jump the line a little bit in the queue of questions. So one of the things that came to mind for me is making sure that the tool is able to be leveraged for individuals of various English proficiency levels, various education levels, and making sure that, you know, we're creating something that is, you know, not so in the weeds that it becomes not, not useful for what it was, what it is, you know, what, at least our immediate goal, which is to try to reach as many people as we can to try to get their, their thoughts around the budget. So to what extent are, is the tool able to be translated, like, is it, once it's posted online, is it something as simple as, you know, clicking a button for residents to, to enter their data in the language they feel more comfortable, especially if we're including a lot of text in the tool?
Yeah, yeah, another great question. So we're really proud of the different languages that we offer. I think we have now 10 to 12 languages that we offer. And essentially, again, you have unlimited licenses, so I would envision this to be launched in English version along with whatever languages are of prominence in your city. So you don't get any, those are all included. But the data that, what what I would need from you to do that is, we would just need the language translations. So on our end, we would translate buttons that are on the platform, like, for example, the words you have a surplus would be translated, the submit button would be translated, but anything that you add, like police and public safety, those things would need to be translated. So if you have an in-person translator, I would just work with them to get that launched, or we we do some consulting services where we can just do the full translations for you as well.
Great. And I think this is really helpful to hear because, one, the fact that we have multiple licenses and we could just do a lot of stuff. Because one of the things that I do think would be perhaps a little more beneficial for members in our multifamily, our residents in our multifamily buildings, is perhaps a little less around like property tax rate changes, but a little bit more around where they would like us to out, you know, invest resources in terms of programming.
Love it. And that's actually a good segue to the second tool. So I can go to the second tool now, and then I can just continue to answer questions as they come up and afterward as well?
Yep.
Garrett, if you could, though, before you move on, can you talk a little bit about how other jurisdictions use Balancing Act? And I think if you could begin to make the distinctions between kind of the educational purpose versus the feedback purpose, particularly as it, as it relates to, you know, a real-time budget. So as a, for instance, if we were in the middle of budget season, you know, some of the limitations or even advantages to to Balancing Act in those moments, again, kind of the feedback versus education question.
Yeah, okay, so I'll answer that one first. So in the Analytics tab, and that's something that I'm happy to go through, but, or we can go through a different time, but in the Analytics tab, we we track not only submissions, so people submitting and what they are submitting, but we also track total time on site and the average of what time people are spending on the site. So we're tracking submissions, and then we're tracking metrics surrounded around education and transparency, because for me personally, this tool is more impactful as an education transparency tool because I'm looking at all the constraints, what the programs entail. So me personally, I like to look at this tool as the education transparency tool. We try, we capture metrics around that, while the second tool... While the second tool that I'm going to show you, the prioritize tool, that one is more based around submissions. Not saying that this one doesn't collect submissions because it will, um, but that's how I kind of separate it. And then, uh, to your other points, one use case that I worked on this year, Clear Creek County in Colorado, what they had was a deficit of a $2.9 million deficit. And they're again asking their residents, okay, are you willing to reduce spending? Yes or no? If not, they are testing the waters of, well, what sorts of things could we do on the revenue side? And I'm gonna zoom in here. So here, they're showing potential ballot measures. So if you're not willing to cut services, you can't submit your budget, just like you guys. So we need to find revenue sources. So they're asking residents about sales tax rates, property tax rates. And what I've loved that they've done here is, again, when I increase the sales tax rate by half a percentage, again, I'm in this realm and that's just not tangible to me. So here, the context that we can add around that is something like, well, what would this mean for you? A five percent increase in sales tax would mean an extra three cents to your $5 coffee every Thursday. So once you make it more tangible and digestible from this perspective, this is how I really like to see clients use it. Because then there's an op, there's an understanding of, one, why we are in deficit? And two, am I willing to reduce spending? Or am I willing to pay these extra sales tax, property tax, and get rid of kind of the scariness around the word tax and make it more digestible and saying, you know what? I can afford another three cents on my coffee every Friday morning if it means I get to keep all, everything in Parks and Rec and public safety and all that. So that's one of my favorite use cases of the tool for sure. It's just showing a deficit and seeing how the, how the public navigates it, through cuts or through increases.
So, um-
One second. Um, I just want to make sure that I'm able to acknowledge, acknowledge folks because our speaker may not be able to, to see us.
Oh, I can't. Yeah. So thank you.
No worries. Um, Councilmember Small?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I just was, I was trying to be guttural in case that was gonna be the critical factor. I apologize if it was untoward. But this is actually, um, the area that I find interesting here. And so, um, I'd, I'd like to propose a counterfactual to you on this premise. Let's say that, um, are, uh, groups of people, um, who are organized in a place, they have a firm opinion about, like, what things should be cut regardless of whether or not there's a budget suggestion. First, um, is there, um, in the grand scheme of things? I know you sort of implied that there were some protections about evaluating what the education specs were. But it's not going to be possible for someone to just like, like bomb this site like it's the fat bear site over, uh, the holidays and just put in a bunch of stuff for something that implies that suddenly everybody thinks that we should be doing X, um, when that's not necessarily true. Or, um, do you portend? Or how do you deal with? What I see is an inherent eventuality in this tool for our particularly idiosyncratic place about, uh, anybody with a long-term plan, um, either for or against the municipality.
Yeah. Good question. So we do not limit any suggestions through the tool. So someone could go through and enter their suggestions three times. But we have barriers on the back end to track when that happens and then to remove it so it doesn't affect your analytics at the end of the day.
Well, I guess, um, I, I don't, I don't mean to press particularly on this, but I guess, like, to get to the particular hypothetical. Like, let's say, um, suddenly, um, right around the budget, every single person who has decided that we don't need a, um, uh, independent tree person, bum rushes the site. And then now it looks like we don't need an independent tree person. And then, um, it provides a lobbying opportunity that may or may not be formed in reality. And so I'm curious about how, uh, like, what is the backend algorithmic reality of what people are saying? Does that make sense to people?
It, it, it does. I know that, um, some other platforms that I've worked with, which aren't nearly as cool as this, um, tend to, um, even platforms like SurveyMonkey capture IP address, addresses, which allow you on the back end to, if you see fifty entries from the same IP address. You don't know who that individual is or anything, but you know you see fifty entries from the same IP address. Okay, they're, they're bombing you, right? So then you can go through and, and kind of call the data that way. I don't know if this platform, um, has something similar, an ability to do something like that on the back end.
Well, I think- I'm just curious because-
It does. Just really quickly, it does.
Yeah. I'm interested to hear.
Yeah.
I'm interested to hear.
And the, the, I guess this is also just kind of a, this is what I was alluding to, like the, and, and I think Garrett was, was, uh, kind of providing this feedback. The purpose of this particular tool would be to, for educational purposes, right? So, so people are, are trying to, folks who are trying to understand how you all make the decisions about, um, how to balance different types of priorities and, and the factors that go into that and how difficult it can be. And, and, and that's kind of evident in the adjustments that you can make by individual category. But what, and Garrett, correct me if I'm wrong, what most cities don't use this particular tool for is to make those kind of decisions. They're not, they're not using this to try to determine what the public feels about any particular item. It's more along the lines of public, these are the, the things that we have to consider. You can get as granular as you want to, to give a more realistic examples. But you're not really trying to get feedback from this module. There's another module for which feedback is, is utilized for.
Yes. And thanks, Garrett. I, I appreciate that. I wanted, and, and I think we've discussed that before, but I did want it like more explicitly stated. And, and just Garrett, on, on your end, if you could just run it, what you were about to say, I'd appreciate it.
Yeah. Great points all around. And yes, it's the simple answer. So, uh, with this tool, you will get submissions. But I think this operates better as an education and transparency tool. So when you, uh, provide that background in this initial screen, this tool is not binding at the end of the day. This tool is used to collect public input, um, and just educate and be more transparent around the budget. There's that secondary tool, which is called the prioritize tool, where I'll pull up, um, an example of where someone did use this as a binding election. So this is the city of Denver. They use this tool as a binding election tool, uh, for their participatory budgeting program. So this is a prioritize tool. So you can use it as a binding program. But I think for the sake of where Tacoma Park is today and their engagement process, I think it just fits nicely as another option. Because this tool and all digital tools, um, are not going to be, be your silver bullet for proper public engagement. You need thick and thin engagements. You need in-person engagements. But this just helps cater to some individuals that can't make a city council meeting, uh, today and tonight because of other reasons or just reaching other demographics and age ranges. So, correct. I don't think this tool is your binding tool of making these decisions. It just gives you more evidence to make more data-driven, evidence-based decisions.
Great. Thank you. Um, I don't want to derail your presentation. But we do have, but we do have, um, Councilmember DeBala also has her light on for questions.
And these are specific to this section. So, um, this is great and I agree with the other two councilmembers who said that a little more detail in, in some of the categories would be useful. And we could maybe start by picking one category, not trying to do all of it this year. But yes, um, to that point, it's, in the example you, in the other example you gave, it was much more easy to, it was much easier to see what the impact of cutting one percent or three percent or five percent would, would mean. So in the, whatever other place that was, where it had housing and, and recreation and so forth, it translated it into people or services. And, and when I say, let's go a little more granular, that's what I think would be useful. Would be, and what is this, what does this mean, um, for the services? So that, that's, that's my comment. My questions are that I noticed it said general fund. And so can you, can someone comment on general fund versus total budget? Because the Tacoma Park budget has the general fund, the capital fund, the ARPA fund and so forth. And, and it's not immediately, there's no little I next to general fund that says what I just said. So were you not able to do capital projects? I remember there was a discussion about whether that was even possible given the way the city has the data and the way your system is set up. Cause to Councilmember Gibson's comment earlier, you know, what if I think there's too many police vehicles? Well, but that's not even in here. But I know that as a council member, but a resident wouldn't necessarily know that. So, so how, how have other communities used this to cover capital and other budgets? And why do we not have it that way right now?
Yeah. Great question. So, yeah, good eye. This is only the general budget. So this is only showing general budget. There are no limitations. We can add the C, um, capital improvement plans and budget in here as well. So what I see typically, what cities do is they use the budget simulation for the general fund only. And then they use, what I'm going to show in a little bit, the prioritize tool for the capital improvement projects. So I'll put a pause on that.
Okay.
But, um, to your point, if you want it all in one place, that is, uh, very doable. So even in this example here, um, you can see this is a general budget that is balanced. But not only do they have departments like Police Department, Parks and Rec, they have capital projects here. And I'm gonna zoom in here. So basically, they've labeled out potential capital projects that I could add. Herb cuts, bus shelters, street lights and replacement programs, along with more info here. So there's no limitations of what we can present in here. It's more what story do you want to convey at the end of the day? And then how you want to leverage maybe the general fund for the simulation tool? And then maybe for your capital improvement plan, maybe you're using the secondary tool that I'm gonna show you in a little bit. Uh, the prioritize tool for your CIP plan.
Okay. And last question about the, the first module. I see that you, you have a $1.2 million deficit. Is that a hypothetical deficit? Is that a deficit in the general fund at a particular time in this past year? Or, or is that just for illustration purposes?
It, it's a very rough number for illustration purposes.
Thank you.
We tried to base it, these numbers loosely off the, the approved FY24 budget, um, which does show a 1.2.
And I'll add too, um, and Garrett, feel free to elaborate, but as I understand it, part of the advantage of having this four-year contract, like other cities, is that the, the module typically evolves over time. So you start with kind of the base model that we have presented to council. And the longer we have it, the more granular we get, the more detailed it get. And that's, that's kind of the, the, the model that most folks take. Is that correct?
Correct. Yeah. The, the three-year agreement is the most popular agreement, exactly to your point. Because each level of engagement changes in the year. So year one is about, let's just set this up, maybe navigate it a little bit internally, have the discussions that we're having now. What would we like to show? Year two is when we, okay, let's push it out to the public. And then year three is, okay, how can we make it even more digestible and ask more meaningful questions within the budget? So one, just through public engagement journey, I think it's popular. That's why the three-year deal is the most popular. And then truthfully, it's just, uh, cost savings for the tool because the price is locked in through those three years. So you don't have to pay any increases in, due to inflation, software, server costs or anything like that. So you're getting a very nice deal, 5,800, um, for this tool and it's locked in.
And I do, um, this is, uh, mayor Cersei, I, I do think that it's, um, important, um, and I know I keep hearing add more, add more, add more, add more. But if you're thinking about this from a user experience, adding more can sometimes make it really complex for people, um, to, to address in a single kind of sitting, right? So you want to try to make sure you have it where they could pull it up on a single screen and be able to navigate, um, in a, in a reasonable amount of time. But one of the things that I do, kind of going back to Councilmember DeBala's point around why general fund, is if the question that we're trying to get residents to understand is, how does some of these services and the juxtaposition of your tax rate and certain services is in the general fund? You know, I think the, the, the question around ARPA is one that it's, it's a separate account. It kind of, so again, if we're thinking about, if we have limitless opportunities or limitless bites at the apple, it's either, um, what is the main thing that we're trying to educate residents on with this module versus the second module that I promise you we're gonna let you get to? Versus whether or not we would need to come up with another iteration of this module to help educate residents around another aspect of the budget. So I do just want to make sure that, that folks are kind of keeping that in mind, that, you know, the user interaction in the interface is also important. Because our goal is to get people to actually use this thing.
That is a good point. And the last point I'll make on this tool for now is, when you do have these different funds that are funding specific items on the expenditure side, for example, in this example, this city has a better road sales tax. When I make increases or decreases to do better road sales tax on the revenue side, it can only change a particular item on the expenditure side. So there's ways to illustrate this fund from the, from the revenue side is dedicated funds to this expenditure side. So there is a way to put in your capital and your ARPA and other utilities in here as well. And actually showing directly, this influences this only over here. So there's just, there's a lot of mechanisms in place, floors and ceilings, suggestion boxes, all that, to kind of take the simulation tool over the top while being still digestible.
Great. That's helpful.
All right. About, uh, prioritize. So this is the second tool. And to be honest, I think this might be my favorite tool, um, of the three because it's just so flexible. So here, we have a draft that is saying, uh, all right, residents, the city council has identified the following items as priorities for the city. Which of these are your priorities too? Where, where do we align? So the instructions here are saying, residents are provided with five points to allocate to their preferred investment priorities. I click continue. Again, we're gonna ask those questions, whatever questions you want, age range, drop a postal code, what have you. And here, instead of a balance bar, we are now seeing a thermometer. So there's a cap here. I have five points available and all of the strategic priorities that I think you guys have already, uh, adopted or pushing for it are listed here. So I scroll down as a user. It's very nice visual, looks great on mobile devices. And I have five points to select the ones that are most aligned to me. So here, again, we have the nice more info to learn more about, well, what is the 2020, 2035 net zero greenhouse gas emission goal? What does that mean? I click the more info. I'm gonna zoom in here for you. Climate change mitigation. So we have some more info around this. Climate change mitigation, so we have some more info around this. And then also we have more details where not only are we showing strategies of how we get there, we have our desired outcome. And then we have links to uh other initiatives, ongoing activities and major projects. So um the context tool is great, links, photos, videos, more text, whatever you want in there. Everything is categorized as well, so if I'm more interested in finding priorities that are environmentally sustainable to the community, I click on that and maybe I'm gonna select two of these, one, two. So I've selected two. I have three available, so I'm gonna go back to all. And then I'm gonna go, okay, let's guard our sanctuary city status because that is very important to me. Looks like I have two points left. Let's do uh increase racial equity work. And then the last one is plan for city development while maintaining Tacoma Park's charm and diversity. I click select. So I've utilized all my points. So I scroll down and before I click submit, the cool thing with this tool is I'm able to, and I'm gonna zoom in again, I'm able to rank order my choices. So if you remember, I selected that twenty thirty-five net zero greenhouse gas is my number one choice. But let's say guarding our sanctuary city sta- status is my number one. I, I put that to number one. I'm gonna put plan for city development while keeping the charm and diversity of Tacoma Park, number two. And increase racial work, number three. And then I click submit. So this tool, very easy to navigate, very easy to create, um very visual. And it's very flexible. So this is an example of using points. Um, what is really popular is what I was showing you and how we can in institute the CIP is you can use dollars. So let's say we have one point two million dollars available for CIP funds. The constraint is we can't move forward with everything, so we need you to select the ones that fit the mold. And you can see some of these I can't select now because that would put me over my total. And then I rank order again. So you can use points, dollars. And then lastly, um, you can use any unit, but what has been really popular for clients that I've worked with this year is using it for housing as well. So let's say we need to find twelve hundred housing units, affordable twelve, affordable units uh for the city. Where would you like to allocate them? Okay, let's look at city park, I can click more info. I can add a map to see where these affordable housing units will go. And let's say I'm going to select that one. And in this use case, you're gonna see the thermometer grow from uh red to orange to yellow because we're actually having a goal here instead of a cap. And then once I hit my goal, you can gamify it a little bit, make it a little fun and add confetti, of course. And then, of course, rank order. So uh, a lot of different use cases here. The analytics behind this are really powerful and just calculating consensus analysis on what people are selecting and how high they are ranking certain positions. Um, but for the use case right now that we have a draft that is, I would say, ready to go, uh pending any edits uh is where do the strategic priorities align with residents here?
Garrett, if you wouldn't mind showing the uh, the different views as well.
Hmm, yes. So here I'm looking at the grid view, which is just nice and visual, but um I was provided by city staff, just great context here. So here's the other, other view we could look at, it's called the list view. So instead of seeing all the tiles at first, I still see the great image here, nice clean image. But then I'm able to see all those more info and more details, the strategies, desired outcomes, links, uh all on one page as well. So however, we can set a default to either, either or. Or the user can go back and forth between this version, large grid version and just regular grid version.
And quick question, um, um, in terms of the different views. It's the tool able to be used on, on phones, like the, the, the visuals would be the same for phones, tablets? As well as computers?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep, yeah, it actually, so most of the user base that utilizes these tools because a lot, once this goes out, press typically uh pick it up and you get some nice earned media just because it's meaningful, new and innovative. So a lot of those, a lot of those articles ended up, end up getting spread across Facebook next door where people are generally on their phones. So we actually see a higher user base um on the mobile phone and that is completely fine uh with these tools because they look really nice.
Garrett, can you just really briefly talk a little bit about the analytics for this module? I thought they were really cool, particularly the one thing that stood out to me was uh the, the ability to kind of see how you could appease the most people um in, in their selection and uh, you know, the combination of selections that would allow for the, the greatest number of people to have at least one of their choices included?
Yeah, I agree. I, I really like the analytics here because it um makes it easy for city staff to present the data back to city council, but then also create that feed look, feed loop back uh to the public. So what uh he was just mentioning there was we tally the votes in different ways. So we tally the votes in weighted fashion and unweighted fashion. And the only difference is there is the weighted vote total. That includes the rank choice ordering, the dragging and dropping of projects. So I, I can actually compare weighted versus unweighted. But then my favorite part of this tool is, okay, let's say we're gonna move forward with the top five CIP projects. So I'm gonna select one, two, three, four, five. And then we do the analytic work for you. So here, consensus analysis, this is saying that eighty-three percent of people that submitted would see at least two of their choices win if you move forward with those five projects. While a pretty strong amount, thirty percent, would see at least four of their choices win if you move forward with these five projects. So this just generates quick consensus analysis uh for you. Um, and then I won't go into much detail, but we can calculate it in instant runoff or rank choice voting, which is very popular. Um, calculate it by votes by rank, how many times was update the dog park ranked first versus ranked fifth. And then, of course, the Condor Save method, um, which actually puts all projects head to head against each other. And it will then tell you which project beats all other app, all other projects head to head against each other. Almost like a March Madness bracket type of thing. So a lot of different views on how to dissect the analytics, but to your point, this is my favorite part, the consensus analysis, nice, quick data right here. And yeah, that's the prioritize tool. A lot of different use cases there. You can launch as many as you want, internal, external, used across all their departments. More the merrier.
Great.
Councilmember DeBala?
Is there a third module or we need to, or have we?
Just wanna confirm.
Yeah, there, there is a third, third module.
Okay, so before you get to the third module, because it's a little, little off the, the question, so exactly how would we use this in the first year? So would a city council subcommittee make suggestions about some of the more detailed categories or questions? Or would city staff group provide the, the additional detail? Then when we, when we go to use it with, how, exactly how does this work? I'm having a little trouble figuring this out.
Yeah. So, so yeah, I would, I would say that's part of the, the open question tonight is what the, what the next steps will be. Um, and you know, either manner could work if, if you would like to direct, you know, direct us to direct staff to um, to build back a tool, it'd be helpful to know sort of what specific feedback you're looking for, if it is a prioritization tool. Um, you know, I, I think that's probably the, the simplest to amend at this point. Um, but just that, or if, if council does wanna have a, a subcommittee uh uh to have that conversation and to, to work with staff to build, to build, to bring forward a recommendation to the rest of council.
Yes, and um, so I think that um it's important for us to um as a council, also as city staff, because I, I know that um city staff are charged practically every other day with trying to identify ways, um responding to resident questions and trying to identify ways to um engage the community. Um, and when I think about some of the initial steps that we can take in terms of leveraging the tool, um, the first thing that comes to mind for me is um around our budgeting process more globally. Um, and it kind of goes into, you know, additional work sessions we'll have tonight, right? Um, I get squeamish when I look at the fact that you have to scroll five times over um when trying to look at all of our priorities. Um, and so um, you know, really, and, and understanding, and we'll talk more about this during the work session, but um, really trying to um make some decisions around what are our priorities? Um, how do they actually relate to activities that we wanna see in the budget? Um, and then from there, you know, making sure the staff have that and instructions on how to incorporate those aspects into the budget, right? Um, so I do think that for the purpose of um our budgeting, budget planning, um, really kind of focusing on kind of stringlining the, the priorities and kind of thinking through the priorities. I think it's, and getting resident feedback on priorities is gonna be really important. I know um a number of us, a number of us may recall during the last budget cycle, there were lots of questions around um our um, uh, energy, uh, I think there was some, the greenhouse. There was a question about sustainable, um, our sustainability manager, whether or not we should fund that um, that position. And so I think that there's definitely a need for us to focus on how we can leverage this tool to kind of get, drill down a little bit more in terms of um priorities and as they real, how they potentially relate to the budget. Um, in terms of the other piece, um, I do think that um it would be helpful um to prepare, to have staff to start um working through um some of the resident education components that we can use in that first module. Now, um, you know, in, in my view, um, I think that our, our staff have a lot of information at their, at their disposal in terms of the types of questions that we receive a lot in terms of the budget in and of itself. And are there some ways that we can um leverage this tool to kind of do some of that initial education of the budgeting process? Um, I think would be extremely, extremely helpful. Um, and with a simple start and really I do think it's important for us to figure out a way to make sure that we are um, trying to come up with an inclusive approach, um that even, you know, our folks in our multifamily buildings who otherwise wouldn't necessarily just think of the budget from the perspective of uh taxes paid, um could also be engaged. Um, so that, that's my two cents, but I really want to stop scrolling on the priorities, first and foremost. Uh, Councilmember Gibson?
I totally agree, um, Mayor, with the, the importance of this tool. I'm not sure which module around the budget process. I mean, looking at the, the priorities, um, if we were talking about education, both in terms of budget education, I guess, I, I just wonder if there, I'm, I'm looking at this and saying, well, what what are the steps, what are the, the goals, what are the measures, what are the deliverables under each one of these priorities? And, and sort of like, it's like, can we educate by saying what, what measures we have or what goals or projects we have? And also solicit input in terms of other things that we, that, that we haven't come up with yet, that we, we haven't formalized at least. So educate, educating around budget priorities by kind of aligning them through um these very, very mini and overly general priorities. I don't know what you're saying. I can't read that fast. Well, let me, go ahead without, I'll read y'all proceed.
I was just pointing to what's on the screen, which is the detailed description from the priority document, which still isn't perhaps as fine-grained as we'd like, but which is certainly more than one phrase that, that you get. I, how do you get that? So you brought it up on the screen and you clicked something, so in the
The more info here.
The little I, okay, thank you.
And so, thank you, yeah, I, I was presuming that that was to be found somewhere. And then to add to that or to, to follow up, but my suggestion is how can we get suggestions from uh the residents?
I agree, uh, yeah, this engagement's not just about qualitative data, uh, or the quantitative data, it's the qualitative data too. So here,
Yeah.
if I'm looking at the twenty thirty-five net goal greenhouse and I'm gonna zoom in here, the options are I can click the more info, which I showed you there. Or I can click on the comments box and I can enter a comment related to this right there.
So we could actually be even more forceful about it than, than sort of this bubble, uh but uh more proactively encourage, what are your ideas? I mean,
Right here.
Uh, you know, just, uh, that, the feature works, seems to work well, but it might be hidden. It might not be used as much as if we really wanted to be, to push that, but thank you.
No, I agree, and that's why we have this one too, that can just stand alone as a suggestion box. Or at the very end, when I click submit, we can have an open uh feedback box here. So it says, would you, are we missing anything? Or how did this tool make you feel? Do you feel more connected to the city? Do you understand the priorities? So we can have not just dropdown and multiple choice, but we can have an empty comment box too.
If I might just follow up, uh, thank you, yeah, that, that, that is, that is helpful. So I think if we did, if we did decide to go this route, we could um make the instructions more explicit um to, 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 to drive the responses in, in the direction that we want. Not, you know, not the answers, but that they use these various boxes that are available.
I agree. And even just if, I, I heard you just mention just maybe even high-level explanation of what the budget process entails. That's what we can leverage these entry screens for because this is where we're providing the background. Like, for example, the city of Denver, as I mentioned, they use this for their first participatory budgeting program. But they just simply created a nice graphic that just says, this is how the, the budget works. Design, brainstorm, develop, vote, build the winning projects. So we can provide a lot of background in just the budget process in general. Um, and then, of course, instructions on how to use the tool within uh these nice entry screens.
Councilmember Small?
Um, yes, thank you, Mayor. I, again, um, as we move through the modules, there's a um given, um, I don't know how to be explicit and um, and not indelicate, but uh whatever. But I, um, I think it's interesting that like, um, given the premise that there are new council members here. And um, like, notwithstanding the fact that, that not all of us, uh, that some of us did come with a substantive amount of experience. I gotta think about bullies. And I just am not super comfortable as we move down the modules thinking about um turning things over to things over to, I don't know, what Madison would, in the Federals would call mobs. And so, I would like to make a motion that I move that if we choose to use the additional modules here, that we limit their impact insofar as they do not have any sort of overriding authority on the actions of this council.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, my, that's, Councilmember Small has raised a concern that has, I've been thinking about as we've gone through this presentation, and that is, I think it's very important to get community feedback at all of these different levels that we've seen here tonight. But my, I also have a fear that people are going to expect that we have converted Tacoma Park to a direct democracy. And I don't think that is what would be in the best interests of the city. There's a motion on the floor.
Councilmember, Councilmember DeBala?
I have a slightly different view. We take input in many other ways. This is another way to make input. This is not a referendum. I think that we could, that's clear. If we need to make it clear, we can make, make it clear. But I like that there's a way to get, hopefully, more input from a wider range of residents, which was the reason we started this.
Right.
But again, not a referendum, completely agree.
Yes.
Yeah, and, and if, I mean, it's, I think of it a lot like, like an extremely powerful survey tool that provides additional inputs that you might not typically get with just checking a yes or checking a no. But like with all surveys, there's a reason why you ask for demographic data, you ask for ward data. It's so that when you get to that point, when you're trying to filter how much weight you give it, that you understand who the, who the individuals were who completed the survey, and to continue to try and hold those that did not, and those perspectives, and try and gain those perspectives in other ways, hold those with you as you move forward through any decision-making you make, you make based on the data.
Right. Yeah, I agree wholeheartedly. I think that one of the things that's important for, for all of us to keep in mind is that, especially during budget season, we get input on the budget from a number of different ways. We have people who come in here every single special meeting regarding the budget, and they write testimony and they send us lots of things. We get emails from our constituents. We have series of meetings with residents around the budget. We have meetings or a series of meetings with staff. We get the staff recommendations around the budget. We talk to one another. We rely on our prior expertise around aspects of the budget. I consider this to be one, one of the many sources of information that may be available to us. That said, I, I hear you, and the questions that I've raised continuously is like, hey, I could really, just in full transparency, see, or it's one, two, and three, white, 50 and below, that's what we're going to get. And, because that's what we get when we have, unless there's lots of very, very, very targeted outreach, that's typically kind of what we see when we do our online surveys, right? And so we just, I mean, that just, it, it, it's a fact, I'm not making it up. So unless we are purposeful in creating other mechanisms for engaging, and we are going to be purposeful in creating those other opportunities to engage residents that typically are not in those categories, I, I think this could be a really powerful tool. I mean, the mere fact that the tool can work via the phone, we can translate, we can change the interface so it's not so much about how much do you want to pay in taxes, but a little bit more around what city services do you need, or do you want to see?
And I guess, Mayor, I really, I appreciate that part of it. I am not trying to say anything in disparagement of the potential with the front-end goals of this may be. I am, I am sort of concerned though about whether or not the tendency of this will be to acknowledge the fact that, relatively speaking, there are voices that were relatively unheard previously that have expertise that are sitting up here currently and whatnot. And so I just want to make sure that we are respecting the effort of participating in an active participatory democratic republic, at the same time as we are trying to provide an infinite amount of information to people about the way in which we make decisions, which is all very public anyway.
Yeah. But I do think that, you know, I do think that while we put a lot of information out there, tools like this makes, make it more accessible to many. So, you know, while I understand.
I'm going to hold you to that side of it.
Yeah.
And then I'll just let it go.
I, I do a lot of this for a living.
And I would draw my motion also. I would draw my motion.
No worries. But, but again, you know, the biggest thing and the biggest challenge that I see is really trying to make sure that we are thinking about and creating and leveraging the tool in a way that would resonate more with, for example, our multifamily residents, our renters, right? Making it more around services that people want, or services that people use, or services that people value, is really making sure we're using things like Facebook and WhatsApp to publicize the fact that this tool is there and that we translated in Spanish and Amharic. I think those are some of the things that, that we have to do as a city in order to ensure that we're not perpetuating what we've already experienced whenever we put a lot of these online surveys out there, that it caters to a very specific, important, no less, every voice matters, but it does target a specific segment of the community. Councilmember Siemens?
I'm not hating, I'm just saying.
Thank you. And like I said, I see great value in getting the community feedback, and this tool looks to be a dynamic tool for doing that. But I do think that it also depends a lot on how this is presented to the community and, and make sure that expectations are reasonable.
Yeah. No, that, that makes sense, and I appreciate Acting City Manager Eubank stressing the aspect of education, and to ensure that folks don't conflate this tool as something that's like the group decision-making, which can also be a challenge. Councilmember Hanzai?
I, I'm sorry to just, in some ways, echo my colleagues, but I do, I do want to do that. I, I feel really strongly that this is a really powerful participatory tool that's been created. The visuals are really intensely powerful, and that there aren't a lot of other tools out there that allow users to play around with the data and get really well-done analytics. I'm particularly impressed by those analytics. And only some people actually are going to be able to process the full power of those analytics, as we've seen in ranked choice voting across the nation. But, but, but when the tool is leveraged, I think it, it does add another tool to our toolbox that gives us a lot of ways that we can interface with the public. I, I do do participatory surveys in really remote places around the world. That's part of what I do for a living outside of this. And I think this looks really incredibly great, but it definitely has, if misused, like any tool, including just a computer, it can obviously be a train wreck. But, but it is a great tool when leveraged, and it looks like it's well-designed. So it's about how we, the staff and the council, choose to use it.
Councilmember Fulcher?
I know that it's, it's not really our goal here, but I think a positive externality that we're going to experience from this is the use of schools in our community, teaching their kids about, you know, I could especially see the middle schoolers and high schoolers, and even like Girl Scouts and Boy Scouts when they're learning about money, you know, jumping into this and really enjoying using it.
Thank you, Councilmember Fulcher. And that was something I was thinking about as well, like, is this a tool that we could also use for youth engagement and working with our rec department to really try to get that youth thought around services that they would like to see in the community and working with youth council to do that? Would be a great idea.
That is a very popular use case of the tool, actually. When you do go live with the budget simulation, I am very confident you will have some local high school teachers very thankful for it, because this tool is highly used in civic classes, middle school, high school, where these are launched. So that's one thing. And another thing is, you can create your own prioritized tool, and you can make it maybe a little bit more youth-friendly. Instead of having dollars, you can change the unit to Tacoma, Tacoma Park points, Tacoma Park cookies, whatever you want. And that's something actually the city of Largo, Florida does. They actually created their own unit for different types of engagement too. So, again, just the flexibility, how you can kind of leverage it. And to, I thought that was a great discussion. These tools aren't binding, they're just, and this isn't, and I'm, I'm the vendor here, and this isn't the silver bullet to your public engagement needs, it's just one, it's one arrow of what you want to do here with public engagement. But I've seen the wins, I work directly with the clients, I drink the Kool-Aid of these tools. I'm pretty confident you guys will be very happy with the, with the use of it, for sure.
Okay. Councilmember Siemens?
Thank you, Mayor. And it strikes me in looking at the flexibility you have in here, that this isn't just a budget tool, it doesn't have to be, because it seems to me you could, you could build a list of questions for the community surrounding a given project, and maybe talking about doing some changes in a park, and have several choices in there for the park unrelated to the budget, just, you know, what would people like to see in that park? So I, I think there's a lot of dynamic uses for this tool.
That's a very popular use case, parks, just selecting projects, so no dollars tied to it. But one that I was really proud to be working on was a climate mobilization strategy survey from the city of Hillsburg, California. So they've changed the units to greenhouse gases saved. So they're helping residents show what different ways we are trying to get to our greenhouse goal, reduction goal, and just the different ways that maybe a community garden sounds great in nature, but sadly, that doesn't reduce greenhouse gases like investments in some sort of different transportations.
Yeah.
So, again, a lot of different use cases here for your different departments.
I can even foresee how a tool like this might be very valuable in helping to understand community desires surrounding a development project, but we won't go any deeper than that, thank you.
All right. Final tool, the third tool.
All right. Real quick, Councilmember Gibson?
I just wanted to reflect.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to reflect.
I can't see any hands up or anything, so sorry.
I just wanted to reflect on a couple of things that popped into my mind was the number of pages in our budget versus this tool. So there's a, there's a, in other words, the accessibility, whether it's school folks or just, the majority of our, our population in whatever ward aren't that involved, period. So this is for everybody in, 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 in single-family houses and multifamily houses. And I think we, you know, we, we should, we paid for it, and let's use it, and let's, let's make the most out of it. I'm excited about what we might be able to do out of this tool myself.
Great. Thank you, Councilmember Gibson. All right. So is there any other components that we should talk through tonight?
Yeah, so Garrett, there's one more module, and this one is fairly quick.
Yep. Nice, quick and easy. This is the taxpayer receipt tool. So here, what we're doing is, we're asking residents, do you want an estimated tax, tax bill of where, how much you're spending and where we're putting those dollars? So here, it's saying, answer a few questions to estimate how much you've paid. Do you own a home? Yes. What is the assessed value of your primary residence? A lot of people aren't going to know that on the top of their heads. So again, we're going to leverage this more info button. This is where we'll plug in the property search link, maybe the assessor's office, or even just put in the median value, if people just want to type that in here. So now, once I find that information, I'm going to type in, I'm just guessing here, what's the assessed value of my primary residence here? View your estimated taxpayer receipt.
Everyone's saying, where are you going to find a house in Tacoma Park for $250,000?
I know. So I, so I think, I don't, I'm not sure what Tacoma Park does, but the assessed value is different from the real value, but I could be wrong, so this might be kind of close to what people might be paying here. So here, I'm scrolling down.
Garrett, if you don't mind, can we just use 600,000?
Oh, yes.
Look more.
I'm, I'm in the Denver area as well, but, yeah, it's housing, that's why the housing tools have been so popular, for that reason, actually. All right. So, here it is. So now, this almost looks like a receipt you would get from Home Depot, one of those long receipts. But here, it's just showing the resident where our tax dollars are going and where we're spending all those tax dollars. So this is just taking all the information from the expenditure side of that budget simulation, plugging in the more information again, so learning about legislative. So as I scroll down, I'm looking at all that. So it's saying here, based on the information I provided, and based on the mill levy that we have set in the background to do the calculations, it's saying that in total, you are paying estimated $3,238 in property taxes. This is, this is what we're doing with the amounts. So $79 is going to finance, $219 is going to recreation, and so forth. And what is really popular about this tool is that this is only showing what the city receives, because someone's tax, property tax bill might be 4,500, but this is your opportunity to say, hey, I know you probably have a tax bill in front of you that's 4,500, we only receive 3,200 of that because the other, because people don't really know that property tax dollars go to schools, there's some county, county charters as well. So this is a good way to show exactly, estimated, of course, sorry, estimated, where their tax dollars are going.
That's actually really, really interesting and scary. But it's, but it is really, really, that is an interesting feature, it's a cool feature.
And that's it? Yep, this tool is just truly just transparency, education, and you commit some buy-in. Like, for example, here in the city of Denver, I think the CFO used it a handful of years in an in-person meeting and said, how much do you think you pay for snow removal? And people are saying, $80, $200, $300. And she had a big smile on her face, and she said, $40.23, how does that sound like a deal for you? So it's just a good way of just, really just being transparent and showing, this is exactly what we're doing with the funds. It's not going to waste, we're working.
Awesome. Councilmember Gibson?
Just two, two points. One, once again, I, this is great, and granularity would be helpful on, on that. But I think maybe we need to, if we use this, that bottom line, which was, what was it? 3,000? We'll have just below that, how much you pay the We'll have just below that, how much you pay the county.
Nice.
So we can, again, educating not only what we chart or what we collect, but also what the county does.
Yeah, Councilmember Gibson, I, I agree, because a lot, we, we, we deal with that a lot, and, you know, we offer a lot of services, and, and folks probably look at their tax bill, and it's like, oh, my tax bill is double that, yeah. County gets the same amount of money, but they're not providing the same level of service. So that is something that's really important for, for our residents to understand. All right. Not seeing any more lights. Thank you so much for, 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 for meeting with us tonight. Ron, thank you so much for all of the work that you've been doing on this project. Again, I can't stress enough how I really think that this can be a wonderful tool in the toolbox that we will have to engage residents on various topics, including the budget. So Garrett, thank you so much for, for meeting with us and kind of walking us through the tools, and definitely look forward to continuing to work with this platform to engage our residents around budgeting in Tacoma Park.
Yes, likewise, thank you for the invitation, and, and yeah, Ron, just reach out when you want to, when you want to get going. I'm excited, so, yeah, speak to you guys soon. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Garrett, thank you, Mayor, and councilmembers.
Thank you. Great job. All right, so, we are going to take a, no, we did not take a break. Councilmember Gibson was very, very interested in the last presentation. So we're going to take a quick 10-minute break. We will reconvene at 9:47. All right, thank you. All right, we're going to reconvene. The city of Tacoma Park City Council meeting for this evening. Our next work session is the budget calendar for FY 2025. And I'm going to hand that one over to our acting deputy city manager.
Thank, thank you, Mayor. So, as, as outlined in the memo, and with the, the attachment, this is a draft of the FY 25 budget schedule for, for discussion. Tentatively, a voting session at the next meeting, if we are, if we are good to go. This is an, an effort that was initiated by the resolution you passed at the end of the last budget cycle, as well as the work of the finance subcommittee over the summer and early fall. A couple of meetings ago, you saw some of the initial recommendations presented and provided some guidance and feedback. This is the attempt to overlay that sort of best, you know, there were, there was an acknowledgement that the best-case scenario, there might not be enough time to do this year. However, we wanted to put our, put our heads together between staff and the subcommittee to see what we might be able to accomplish this year. So this is, you know, you can kind of walk through it. There's a big question mark around community engagement, which is kind of the topic, topic of the night, and how you will receive feedback and your process towards establishing both your priorities and budget priorities before, all of this occurring before your December recess, to give staff guidance as we develop, develop the budget to bring back to you at the end of March. So all of these dates are fairly self-explanatory. I know Councilmember Gibson, I don't know if there's anything you wanted to initially add to that intro.
No, thank, thank, thank you, sir. The, we have had, not as much as we'd like, but we've had some good conversations between the subcommittee and, and you, and also Director Chung, sharing information and recommendations. And so we're, had, we had a chance just yesterday, the subcommittee, to look at, look at your proposed, your, your proposed schedule. Again, it's not the optimal, and, and I think the subcommittee would like to come back to the council for an optimal, recognizing that we can't do it this year. But a, so we really appreciate this good work, and, and just want to say that we've had some good negotiations and conversations, and we need to have more.
Thank you, Councilmember Gibson. So, one thing that I, I will say is, you know, in terms of the optimal, and it sounds like the subcommittee would like for the possibility for starting the budget cycle even earlier than what's proposed here, is that correct?
In, 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 in a few areas, yes, but basically, we're moving it up considerably. And, and the other factor that, that weighs in, obviously, this year is that we will be looking for a new city manager. So, yes, I think that in some, in some areas, we would want to move it up slightly beyond this. But we haven't, we really haven't had the time to, to finalize that and any difference between this and our proposed optimal.
And then, one other question that I have is for November in terms of the community engagement. And I know right now it's listed as TBD, but given that we are in are in, um, you know, the first week of October, um, what are the Subcommittee's thoughts regarding, um, approaches to community engagement that we should consider or, um, ways in which we can, um, really work to, um, provide staff with some direction around what are some of the, um, community engagement, um, activities that we want to make sure that we're able to, um, plan for in the month of November?
I'll just, we did have a, a chance to talk about that a little bit, and the Subcommittee was leaning towards two, two, uh, recommendations this year, and that would, would, is a, um, interactive public engagement session, um, with the details yet to be, uh, determined, but something along the lines of what we saw at the Minor Master Plan, uh, presentation at the, at, uh, at Piney Brant, Piney Brant School, where there were different stations with information and people could, could put stickers and things like that. So, we, um, we just briefly discussed that with, with Andrew and whether the, the staff could help us, help, 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 help us do that. The other option, which we've discussed just, just before we got to this point, is the Balancing Act, that we definitely want to rec, recommend, want to using it. So those are the two o, options, but not to, but we're still in discussions and, and Andrew will talk more because he has, um, determined some, some mechanisms and some models, uh, used in other, other cities that we might still have time to do yet this year.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think the first, the first question, and I frame it a little bit in, in the memo, is, uh, is what information does the Council need to establish its budget priorities? One of the things that we've changed a little bit this year, and you can see it on the schedule for November, November 20th, um, following the November 15th presentations that will show the comprehensive financial report and audit, the final report of the city's long-term financial forecast, and the police pension plan actuarial evaluation, um, is that we'll also, uh, city staff will, will put together a, uh, you know, an FY 25 forecast of where we see there being some, you know, potential increases in fixed costs, like cast, you know, costs of gas or other things, what, where our collective bargaining agreements may or may not end up, um, what those other fixed liabilities are, the police pension being, being one of them. Um, so that, that to us is, is an information sharing tool that can help you guide your, your, uh, discussion. Outside of that, you know, it, it, uh, going back and, um, you know, building the Balancing Act, uh, tool at, at this time for this year may be a bit of, maybe a bit of a challenge, um, unless it's, it's sort of, you know, boiled down to more, a little bit more simple, simple terms. Um, but a, you know, a, a community survey, something like that, I do think that there's ti, you know, time, uh, to, to put something out. Um, and in, in terms of the, the interactive, you know, public engagement with, uh, within the budget, that's something that staff has never done before here. Um, I don't necessarily know what that would look like at this point when it comes to a, uh, budgeting, uh, and, and it's really just because I don't necessarily know what the, um, what the, what the inputs are yet, what, you know, what the questions would be that could help, you know, guide your priority setting. Um, so, you know, all that to say, you know, you, it's, um, it would probably be a pretty heavy staff lift to do that, to that, to do that portion, um, if you wanted to hold, you know, public, you know, more general public hearings on the que, you know, on it, it's, again, it's, um, it's really important to understand the questions that you're trying to ask.
Yeah, I mean, I, I agree with that. I think, um, one of the things that, um, I am trying to make sure that, that I'm kind of gathering is the fact that, um, you know, the community engagement components, unless it is something like the Balancing Act or the Budget Survey, um, things like the priorities happen a little later in the process, or at least, um, the, uh, the, um, gosh, where are the priorities? Oh, yeah, the Council FY 25 budget priorities and goal setting, that happens a little later. So unless we are trying to leverage something like the Balancing Act tool to try to get folks to just generally understand some of the, the, the trade-offs in terms of when we're making budgeting decisions, or if we try to use a Balancing Act to try to have, um, residents, um, try to rank some of the priorities, and so then a lot of the community engagement activities that we would undertake, like meetings with residents and the like, um, would be based on identifying any priorities that residents have, right? Um, so I do think that, you know, trying to piece together the timing for what any community engagement would, what it would look like and when it should happen, and I see November is just open, we don't have a specific date, it's just listed first because it's open, um, but it, it is going to be the case that we're going to have to figure out where to put it in, um, in terms of the other items that we have, um, listed here in November, which I think is the important things, you know, going through the, um, the Act for, and, um, I really appreciate the FY 25 financial forecast. I think, yeah, I think that's going to be really helpful. Um, and then the, um, the FY 25 budget priorities and goal settings will, I think, will really put staff and council in a good position before we go on recess with kind of having vision for what it is the Council would like to see in the budget. So it sounds like in terms of, you know, the community engagement piece, that's the other piece we'll still need to kind of talk through, um, but, um, working with the Subcommittee and, um, acting deputy city manager, trying to think through where, where we will put some of that engagement, um, in terms of the calendar.
With, with the Council recess, that, this budget is tight. I mean, and I think that, that, that's fairly obvious, that we, we've got some, uh, Monday meetings, um, special meetings, and, and another meeting that, uh, is currently scheduled for the 15th, November 15th, but maybe moved to, to Monday, the 13th. Um, so, you know, the, 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 trying to figure out where to place the community engagement piece, I think, is, is, is a, is a tough question. At the simplest form, though, I think, just as a response to, um, some of the feedback that we heard during the last budget cycle, uh, it, it, it could be as simple as an opportunity for council members to begin engaging their constituents around what, uh, your, your, your residents feel are the priorities that we ought to be thinking about, right? So, I mean, and, and, uh, again, keeping it simple, uh, in preparation for these priority-setting discussions, um, it's no reason why, uh, Councilmember Gibson is a, for instance, uh, you can't hold some of the, you know, early public hearings with your constituents to kind of get that feedback now. Um, it's not necessarily budget-informed, um, it's, it's not necessarily restricted in any way, just kind of understanding what the realm of possibility is amongst your residents. Um, and then once you understand, I think, uh, as, as the budget becomes more real, some of the limitations, that, that list of priorities from constituents can get more limited and more realistic. But I think that is, again, at the simplest form, one of the options, um, that could be, even absent staff, uh, a, a way to engage community in a priority-setting piece.
Um, so I, there, there are no other lights, so I'm gonna go down the row. Uh, Councilmember Small?
Um, thank you, Mayor. I, I, I wanted to comment on a couple of things that are, that are, um, on the floor currently about this. Uh, one is the word optimal, and, uh, the other is, uh, the, um, what looks like the real pragmatic effort made here, um, by fairly, uh, seasoned, at this point, professionals, um, in providing information to the elected officials, uh, to, and the staff to make these decisions. Um, I, I take the comments of the acting city manager as, uh, well-heard because I, I do think, um, that we have a, we have, we sort of have a tendency to assume, um, that we are going to be able to expert, um, our way into great citizens having their opinions, uh, be weighed, and I get that, um, but I also think that, uh, again, the burden is on the people who are elected to represent those individual places, um, to, uh, reach out to their prospective geographic constituencies and get a real sense of what that information is. Um, to conclude on this subject, I'd just like to say that, you know, all things considered, um, a lot of things don't happen the way they have happened, including, um, uh, a, a brand-new baby or, um, anything like that, but, um, pragmatically, um, you give the people who you trust an opportunity to put their best foot forward, and I would like to say that that is what is optimal.
Councilmember DeBala?
Yeah, a few things. Um, so, so this schedule is for this fiscal, the next fiscal year coming up. So, I'm also wondering, uh, how, how we structure community engagement in November, but coming back to that for a minute, in a minute, um, I also like that there's the financial forecasting and some of that stuff moved up. I like that it is and that it is early enough to, everybody can hear that information. What confused me a little was the two in green up top, because we're already past July, August, and September, and if you're thinking about next year, I wonder whether you, it can't just all be part of the October meeting. So next year for fiscal '26, what, what was the point of adding the two green boxes? Was that in retrospect or is that prospective?
Uh, I guess I'll answer that, uh, the Subcommittee, again, it's, it's a bit of a combination of what, what is being called a pragmatic, but in green is what the optimal would be for this upcoming year.
Okay, so then, then I would say...
So obviously, we can't, we can't do what we haven't done already, but into the future.
So I would suggest that it's part of the work session on the budget schedule, that that would be when a budget schedule were to present it, it would be in the materials for the meeting a week ahead of time, and that that would also be the time when there'd be an outline of how community engagement would be handled in part, as part of the budget schedule, and just do it all at once. I'm not sure I quite follow why we would talk about budget community engagement in the abstract in the middle of the summer.
Uh, I, I think it was because community engagement might take...
A longer plan.
A longer time to plan, um, and the thought was that the...
Okay.
The September budget schedule, uh, you know, right now, the Subcommittee is working on the budget schedule, and, you know, we as a council are going to, um, you know, vote on this and give it any sort of adjustments that we think it needs, and then next year, it shouldn't be a heavy lift for the city manager, it should be mostly how this schedule is, is what we would do next year, except for these two pieces that, the thought was maybe those need to come earlier. Like, if, if we're going to do a survey, it might be better to have that figured out in August or July, uh, rather than later in the year.
Okay, so August is recess, so September makes sense if, if there's going to be a survey, to decide about that, yeah, that makes sense, and then you would have the time to get the survey up and running. Um, and I wanted to come back to community engagement this time around, please.
If I could just finish up on that, the, the July, August, um, obviously, August we're not in session, but the idea was that we didn't want to wait until, uh, too late if, if the community outreach was gonna require some work like a survey would, and so that was why we had to push back so early.
Okay.
Yeah. And I do think, um, that developing the engagement plan early, especially in light of the fact that we have, um, you know, we have all these tools in our toolbox, um, we may have to pick the right tool for the right purpose. So there are some things that in theory could be out there for feedback, um, if you're just trying to educate residents around budget and what it means and what the different components are, then in theory, you could do that based on the prior budget, the budget that just passed, and you could do that and kind of have that out there in the ether for a while. But if you're trying to engage residents around some future, um, options of projects, right? Um, do we pay for, you know, a new dog park versus a new basketball court, something like that, um, then that would be something that would have to come later. That would be some sort of engagement that would have to come later in the process because we wouldn't know what those options are just yet, because we haven't started developing the budget. So while I think that the, the planning, um, could happen earlier, the work session, I'm like, ah, I don't know how much we would be able to discuss other than we need a plan, um, but, um, but I could see how, you know, if there are some education components using data that's already available, you could develop a strategy around that.
So then the other, the other comment, um, I had about this is, is for this November, again, what would be feasible and useful community engagement? I liked the part of Balancing Act that showed the current priorities, that seemed like that might be, because it's already in the can, so to speak. Maybe that would be useful and that would help us with priorities, I'm not sure, um, but I, I thought that was possible. And I, I'm not completely clear if the first unit of Balancing Act that covers the general fund, it looked like that was ready to, no, not ready to go, everybody shaking their heads, no, okay.
Well, I think...
Never mind.
Well, I mean, if, I'm sorry, Councilmember DeBala, I didn't mean for my shaking my head to...
Well, you're not the only one. I got the long view.
But I do, I do believe that, um, that there were some senior staff, senior leadership, um, team comments and edits that have yet to be incorporated.
Oh, okay.
It, it did sound like, um, that there's some members of council that would like to see things a little, a, a couple of extra layers in terms of, um, at least that general fund. So at a minimum, you know, addressing senior leadership teams' comments, um, and that would need to come back before account, you know, just to make sure the folks are okay with that. But I, I, I agree with you, and I was, we were in lockstep around the priorities piece.
Me too, yeah.
Yeah, perhaps being a little bit more ready to go, um, and could actually kind of help to inform, if used in the right way, um, some of the, um, the budget priority discussions.
Because looking at the Rockville Budget Priority Survey...
There's just two of them, there's one for the community, and there's also a separate one for...
Right, and I, yeah, I was gonna bring that up too, but this is the one for the community, and it is essentially their priorities with questions about it, and then one question about which city services you use, which doesn't seem too hard to...
I think that's what Andrew was saying, it's not too hard to do this.
To put that in, yeah, so I'm agreeing, for once. Um, but also, the, the interactive public engagement that Councilmember Gibson talked about, the stations with the stickers, that sounds a lot like the open house, budget open houses that we had a few years ago, but just with stickers. So it doesn't sound, am I wrong?
No, you're not.
Then it, so, so it doesn't sound impossible if, I wouldn't think we'd do all of this, because it sounds like too much in November, which is, just coming up, but those are the ones that look good to me, that, that I would just cross out public hearing, because what public hearing would you have on a budget you don't have yet? So, yeah.
And, um, Councilmember DeBala, kind of picking up, um...
That's what I had to say.
You know, I laughed about your sticker point, but the, the premise was, was right, those budget open houses, um... but the premise was right, those budget open houses or the-
Which were a lot of work.
Which were, which were a lot of-
Which were useful.
I mean, if I remember correctly, because there were a bunch of open houses, and I'm just trying to make sure I'm remembering the proper ones. We had some like public budget open houses where everybody went around tables. And then we did just have like a round table, I want to say, where the different departments, leads kind of was all around the table. We were in another room. And they kind of walked through their respective budgets and answered any questions that we had. And so that was, Jessie, do you remember that? That was in the other room over there. We had the table set up like a big U. Residents could come in and then all of the department heads were around.
That might have been part of the first or second priority setting.
Was it? I felt like there were some budget discussions that happened too.
Well, there were, but I think-
Budget priorities, is that what they were?
No, no, it was-
No, it was the old one.
I'm just previous. My point though.
We had a whole U.
We had a U.
Yeah, but there was the old, the prior council.
When you said U, I was like, ah, I was in a U.
You were in a U. But I believe, because I feel like there was quite a few different approaches to budget and priority discussions because they always melded. There were some times when we were talking from the perspective of council priorities that also had like tax rate kind of questions. Sometimes they were administrative, but they usually were open and residents would have the opportunity to sit in. But that's different from having a full-on open house for the budget. And I remember us having one. I could be totally making this up.
And so then the only thing about doing it in November is you're talking about this year, the budget we have now. You're not talking about the budget coming up because there isn't one yet, even proposed. And so that's great to get input around what we're doing now, but it's not the same as getting input about what we ought to spend money on in the future.
What I believe we were talking about was budget priorities for the upcoming fiscal year.
Right. So then around the priorities makes more sense. Yeah.
And which is exactly what this, the Rockville Community Survey and the mayor and council's budget survey did.
Right.
It, and I think the fact of the matter is that both for council as well as the public, when we got into March and April, there wasn't, we could only change things at the margins. I mean, I felt that way. And so getting as much engagement and both from the community as well as, I'd like to suggest that we have a, we do a budget priority survey for the council, which is really easy to do.
I agree. But then, okay.
And it just didn't get worked into Andrew's work thing. I mean, it would not be hard, but that would be something that would help us. Anyhow, we, again, to try and do something early that where we have actually some room to make more decisions than we do, or at least get more direction, not decisions, but more direction than we would if we're in March and April. And I guess, you know, some of you all have some good experiences to bring to bear in terms of how an interactive budget priorities, open house, did you call it, might go, if you've got some experience before?
Well, it was interactive, but it was more informational.
I looked it up. It was in 2017.
Okay. And we didn't do it again, so maybe it wasn't as good as I remembered.
We did not do it again. But it was back in 2017.
If I could just, I'm recalling a couple of budget open houses that were very poorly attended. The whole senior leadership team was available for residents to come ask questions about the budget. And it wasn't, we weren't very successful in getting community engagement through that process, I would say.
Thank you, Jessie, for solving that mystery. I'm like, I feel like we did it a couple of years, but we didn't do it again. Okay.
Yeah, that's why. Okay.
All right. Councilmember Hanzak?
I have, I do have one more thing to say, which is if we have the Rockville Budget Priority Survey and we have our little online priorities module, it just seems to me like we should set a deadline for the city council members to do the priorities module before we talk a whole lot more about priorities. I mean, it's not hard. It's right there.
Yep. Councilmember Hanzak?
Okay, that covered one of my points. It seems to me, so I guess what my first question is, I didn't hear, and I'm sorry if I missed it, when were we thinking that the modules would be ready, the balancing act, the first or the second module would be completely ready? Is there sort of a target date-ish? Or that we, looks like?
Yeah, in our last conversation with the vendor, it doesn't take him a long time to update. It depends on how significant the changes are, obviously. But if we're just changing the, some of the basic inputs, for example, in the priorities, you know, we change hiring a new city manager to something else, then that would be, I think, relatively quick turnaround in terms of-
So as far as the staff is concerned, it's fairly reasonably well populated at the moment unless there were council tweaks. Is that a fair statement or not?
No, yeah, I mean, from a staff standpoint, as I understand, it was just a, you know, here's the council priorities, you know, adopted from last and plugged it in for sort of demo purposes. So that was the, that was the general concept behind it. There's not a, I don't know, a kind of weighted deliverable associated with that. And that's something that council could choose to-
So it's, but it looked like, to me, it looks like it's fairly well populated unless the council had major tweaks, but maybe I'm misreading. Anyway, with that assumption, perhaps wrong, if it were near ready, ready for piloting, yeah, I'm just wondering whether over the next month, we, the council, could pilot, the staff could be piloting both of the two, well, all three, but, you know, especially the first two tools that we looked at. And then it just, I think it's a very efficient tool, unlike a workshop with stickers that would require a lot of staff time prep and processing afterwards. And it provides an extremely high level of information. But it also strikes me that at this moment, although we want the community engagement to inform ourselves, we also aren't quite ready to hit go on all the tools for the purposes of informing our process in a deep way. It's just not, it's not quite ready for primetime yet. So it seems like a good moment in November to share with the community about expectations, as Councilmember Seaman was saying, you know, could we, could we, the council member, try it? Can the staff try it? Could the community come out and try it as one data point to start informing us on this type of tool as a way to exercise our muscles and interactive budgeting and engagement. And we would not make any promises about using it, but I don't know that we would ever do that in terms of how it gets used. But it could either be done, you know, as a collective where people sit at different laptops around a room or something, or it could be done on Zoom where people are doing that, or both. Or, you know, we, the council members, I don't know if this is very feasible, but we, the council members, as we do, just like we each did budget sessions, we could do a November pre-budget pilot session where we test, not test, but we say, we'd like, we invite you to come and pilot the tool. We'll talk to you about the tool, then we'll walk through it together. And you can do it while you're online with me. And then, you know, and then the date, the city would have that date and they could feed it, the analytics can be fed to us. And then it's not a huge lift because the consulting group is actually giving us the analytics and the staff then are not putting on a big interactive workshop in the middle of November as they're trying to do a bunch of other things. I just, it seems to me that might be the most efficient way to do it, knowing that there are lots of limitations to the tool as a, and I'm not suggesting we're looking at FY25 per se because we wouldn't have all that. We would be looking at the budgets, the priorities we already have, and the FY24 budget that we already have as a way of informing what we're coming into, the process we're coming into. And I'm looking at Councilmember Gibson, that's what, that would be my vision versus trying to tackle something that we don't have all the data on yet.
Yeah, one of the things that, thank you, Councilmember Hanzak. I think one of the things that's important to keep in mind is I think the budget education tool may be a little, may require a little bit more time to finalize, right? I think the biggest issue before this council and the biggest thing that would be helpful for staff is for us to be able to clearly communicate what our priorities are. What do we really, really want staff to work on? And what do we want to make sure is reflected in the budget? I think that if we were to leverage the module of balancing act around priorities, I think that would be cleaner. I think if we want to also translate those materials, those materials, I believe our priorities were already translated. Correct me if I'm wrong.
Yeah, I'm not sure. I'll have to check.
Yeah, we would need to check to make sure that our priorities, whether or not our priorities have been translated, but that's another thing. And so whether or not that would be a little bit of an easier lift, especially if it is already, if the language is already translated, and then we're basically just, for the most part, having the contractor copy and paste the different materials that maybe we already have available. And then that way, it could ultimately help us with identifying and streamlining the priorities that we have. I think that could be a way for us to have some engagement that would happen in November, still inform the budget process without having lots of staff scheduling, you know, in-person meetings during close to the holidays. I mean, I defer to active city manager, Eubanks, and our active deputy city manager in terms of, you know, the feasibility of focusing, using the balancing act tool to start to inform aspects of the priorities discussion, which would give us a little bit more time around the budget engagement piece. Because I do think that there may be folks that want to tweak that a little bit more than the priorities module.
I think that's absolutely right, Mayor. The focus for us now, in the absence of having a real budget to talk about, would be getting some direction from residents and public about which priorities are most fundamental to focus on in FY25. I do think still that, as we talked about when we were discussing the balancing act modules, I think, you know, we should really think of this as a kind of a trial, right? Like, you know, the priorities to date are still very broad, you know, and I think between now and when, when we will be using even a synthesized version of priorities for the budget, the likelihood of us getting substantial feedback from balancing act is probably relatively small. So I just, I think the goal here, in my opinion, should be trying to encourage at an earlier stage in the process, some form of community engagement, just kind of beginning to establish that practice. Doing so now with the expectation that, like, balancing act will improve, we will improve at the community engagement step of our budget process. But I just don't want to set too high expectation for what might come out of quote-unquote "community engagement" at this stage this year.
Thank you. Councilmember Gibson?
Yeah, I guess I talked earlier a little bit about trying to leverage the priorities things because as you just said, they're so broad, I'm not sure that they're useful. What am I more in favor of? I think, I mean, we've got another work session to look at it, so what maybe-
We may be tackling, this may be a two for.
This may be a two. You know, they're, they're, they are too broad. They're not all that helpful for you all to make budget decisions. And comparing them to each other isn't, I don't think, I don't think that, or asking residents or even us, which ones do we think are the most important, isn't, I just don't, I don't think that we can effectively do that unless we get down and figure out some, a deeper what those priorities could mean, the measurables underneath them, some way to dissect, to take values and make them much more specific. We have a few specific projects or initiatives, but I guess I don't feel like we're used as, in their current form, I'm not sure that we can leverage too much from them unless we're asking, what more would you like to do with this, with this particular value? But weighing one against the other, it doesn't, I can't see that working.
Well, I am going to push back a little bit, Councilmember Gibson, because I know that, you know, you mentioned measures a lot. And the only way that you can measure anything is to clearly communicate your vision and what your goal is. And so, you know, staff is looking to council. And I feel like we keep having this circular discussion. Staff is looking to council to establish the vision and the goal. And then they will then say, okay, this is how I can do it. And this is how we would do it in the budget, right? So it's, the priorities are important because they clearly communicate what it is we want to see happen. And so it is the case that if we're saying, I can't prioritize or pick between any of these priorities because they're too broad for me, then why are they priorities? Right? Why are they here? What was the purpose of us putting them forward, right? So it has to be that we've put them forward because there are aspects of them, either through the vision, meaning this is the vision that we have for the community, either through the goal, either through some of the specific projects that are listed that are underway that we want to make sure continue to happen. That is something that this council really needs to assess, right? And that's why, you know, the next work session, and we can kind of move into it so we're not here all night, is about that very point. Because if we're not going to, if we're just flooding the priorities with things that we think just sound good and set the vision of where we want to be just as a community, but we're not actually investing in the, we're not identifying specific projects we want to have done, we're not investing in those projects in the budget, then it's just fluff. So I think that that's the piece that is really, really helpful for us to address. And so it also is helpful when we have that community engagement around that because what we heard during the last budget, and I keep picking on our sustainability manager, who are awesome, and I'm glad we have one, but during the budget, people were actually saying, why are we hiring for this position, even though we have a goal and we have strategic documents around making sure that we're advancing and addressing climate action, climate change. So that's something that we have to clearly communicate, not just for staff, in order for staff to kind of have clear direction of the types of projects that council would like to see and will approve, but also so that the community understands what it is that we're striving to achieve. Councilmember DeBala?
So in summary, it sounds like what we want to do mostly is focus on the priorities? And first, that we as a council get more specific about them and then that we seek in November public input? Or am I not summarizing correctly?
Yes. The short answer to that is yes. And maybe it would be helpful for us to enter into the next work session since we're doing a lot of talk about priorities. So- Oh, sorry. Hold on one second. Deputy City Manager, DeBala?
I just want to point out a couple of more housekeeping scheduling things that are built into this budget before we move on. The November 15th meeting, and it's annotated there that that may reschedule to the 13th. Just a heads up on that, we're working with our vendors to confirm that that date could work. That's a Monday. And then traditionally, the week of November 20th, that's Thanksgiving week. That's been tentatively scheduled for that Monday as a way to get around the Wednesday, you know, close to the holiday. But so I just want to make sure that that's, that's clear. But, so I just want to make sure that that's, that's clear. Theoretically, based on council's schedule, we could push both of those back a week into December, but again, I know you want to protect your, the recess time, as we all do. So just, just wanted to highlight that particular one.
And on scheduling, the week of December 11th is going to require some council time for another project.
Yeah.
And I do just want to say regarding November the 15th, some of the members of council will be traveling to the National League of Cities Conference. So, yeah, that's the 15th. Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Reschedule for the 13th. The 13th will work, the 15th will not. Councilmember Gibson?
Yeah, just, I wanted to get, move to another item on November 29th, budget priorities, goal setting. The subcommittee also had recommended, it didn't get included here, is that it would be, we would be talking about giving recommendations or at least asking for tax rate scenarios for the upcoming budget year. And that's something that we maybe, we need to talk a little bit more about. I did contact the City of Rockville, and that's one of the things that they, that they did give, two scenarios. They were asked, that, in other words, they were asked by the city council to develop two scenarios. And so that's what I hope that we might want to consider asking, as opposed to being given as we were the last city manager, the scenarios that we want to consider. So that, I just want to, I think that's an important addition to looking at budget priorities is the, are those, are those a couple of scenarios on tax rate?
Okay. So Councilmember Gibson, I think there's, the scenarios, I just want to make sure that I'm clear. The scenarios that you're referring to, that the prior city manager had happened internally, was scenarios around...
Increases and...
Yeah, decreases in terms of the individual departmental budgets. So, but it sounds like what you're talking about are scenarios around the actual tax rates, so...
Tax rate, that would be needed. In other words, asking for, say, a flat one, I guess, what did, what did the Rockville came up with? They were given two scenarios. One was a flat property tax rate forecast, in other words, what would, what would, what would the budget look like if you flat rated the tax rate? And then a one, I think it was a one cent increase. So I guess there may, well, there may be different ways that we want to, to help the city manager to frame the budget upcoming, either in terms of what Rockville did or in terms of what our previous city manager did for us. But this would be a time that we could do that. We would want to give instructions to the city manager.
So, so again, just trying to make sure that I understand. So what you're saying is that in November, you would like, if the council wants to ask for the budget to be presented to us under different scenarios, that we would need to communicate those scenarios at that time?
Right, and it would come out in March, April, when it would, when it would be presented, but it would be presented with these scenarios.
Okay, got it. So I do want to, Acting Deputy City Manager, do you have your light on in response to this? Okay.
Yeah, I just, it was sort of the bullet for question that I had, just presentation of the draft budget, and especially with a new city manager coming on board, I think it would be really helpful to understand what sort of presentation will be most effective for you all. And to a public comment raised earlier, are there better ways that we can present this budget to you and provide this information to you throughout that process? And in ways that frankly, might be much more efficient for our staff as well.
Yeah. So, yeah, no, I get, Councilmember Gibson, what you're proposing. Basically, when we have that voting session regarding the budget priorities, which kind of sets the vision for what we're hoping to achieve for the next fiscal year, but also what could be incorporated into the budget, if there are specific presentations of the budget that we would like to see, either specific tax scenarios and the like, we would communicate those at that time.
And I think I want to add too, Councilmember Gibson, you made a distinction, I think, in two things that you said. One was a forecast, the other was a budget, and a scenario, multiple scenarios of an actual budget. In thinking about it the way that the budget is currently presented, which is you have a formal document, and if we were to do that for multiple scenarios, that would, we've never done that before, and it would be an immense task to put together two kind of 400-page documents. So I think the clarity, as Andrew said, on what the presentation is and what information you would want to see in the different scenarios would be incredibly helpful.
I appreciate that it's a new task. The, the, I sent to both Director Chung as well as Acting Deputy City Manager Buldak, the Rockvilles, they had a 56-page paper which had both scenarios. So there's some model on how to do that. They didn't, it wasn't everything, single thing in a full-blown budget, but it was a way, presumably, the council to say, okay, when it got, that they could compare these scenarios and what they couldn't do, or what they, you know, what the trade-offs were effectively.
Yeah, clarity, clarity on that presentation would be, would be what we would need.
So, yeah, I certainly would defer to what's doable, but I, but we do have a model that's useful, I think, for comparison's sake.
Okay. Councilmember Gibson, are you done?
Yep.
All right, Councilmember Small?
I was, I was sort of hoping that we would be transitioning into the next work session, but, so I can make this comment, but I think it is still germane here, and the way that it's come up, I think it's fair. There are some issues with regard to the rigidity of our budget, or the anticipated rigidity of our budget, in anticipating what a project would cost, or what hard dollar spending is anticipated by these pre-planned budgetary systems. And so I'm not sure if structurally, the manner in which we actually spend the money with regard to our current system would lend itself to a significant revision in hypothetical scenarios. If we were in a situation where we were spending, like, to line items, or the individual departments were doing vision-based things, and so they're like, I want to build this, and then they didn't get there, that would be one thing. But it is abundantly clear, from, at least from my frustrations in the last budgetary process, that scheduling or constraining the actual working process with more hypothetical demands doesn't necessarily help to resolve the issue of what this budget spends like and how, in particular, the formulate nature, the codified formulate nature of a variety of spending patterns are implemented. And I do think that it's a bit of a red herring, in my opinion, given those constraints, to put too much emphasis on making internal processes about where you would like to be with the numbers or what you could do, external, because they are so tightly constrained. Like, if we were going to go to, and the reason why I say this now is because, like, theoretically, if we were going through any of these priorities that are fluffy, like the mayor said, let's say I really, really want a compelling RFP done for a rec center before I have to decide if I'd like to do this again. And that that's going to cost a certain amount of money, or that we propose a design contest or something because it's a thing. There is no way for us to ensure that we get from point A to point B on that sort of an aspiration in the budgetary process. And so I think it's important to understand that, like, you know, if we're talking capital improvements, or you get like an aspiration for a cooperative benefit association, this and that and whatever, like, those kinds of flexibilities are not inherently in what we are doing. And if we want them to be in there, that's a whole different thing than making people do more things about the things that are required by law anyway. And that's really my firm opinion about it. So I'm not hating, and I do understand the tendency to want to know, but the concern that I have about the tendencies around where the constant yield rate is, is that the constant yield rate is supposed to be the constant yield rate so that it's a pragmatic floor for you to understand about where the money would be if you did it exactly the same. It is not an aspirational thing to constrain the staff just because. And I'm concerned about the manner in which we are talking about this, when there are really structural issues about the way we implement money that have nothing to do with the way it looks on the piece of paper.
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Small, for that. And I agree. I think that the way that we talk about the budget does not align with the way we talk about work. And so let's move into the next session, because I don't want us to be here all night. But I want us to move into the next work session because it actually speaks to that point of how, and I know we work really hard on the priorities that are here, but there is a lot of items here that we, it is important for us to ask ourselves of the items that we have, to what extent do we want to make sure that these are items that we want to continue to prioritize for the next fiscal year? So for example, and whether or not it requires some sort of budgetary action. So, you know, advancing a community of belonging, building on lessons learned from COVID-19 pandemic to increase residents and small businesses resilience, to the impact of emergency situations so that they recover and thrive in the future. Further, the city's race equity work, identifying prioritized programming needs in the community to develop approaches to meet those needs, emphasize youth, families, seniors, and residents who tend to face barriers to opportunities such as Black, Indigenous, and people of color, immigrants, and those unsustainable, lower-paying jobs or incomes, and people with developmental or physical disabilities, we include, we could just say everybody.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say. I really apologize. But as we move to this, I did want to just say, I, maybe we go back to everybody looking at it, and then we chalk it up to the fact that there were a bunch of new people on here that wanted to make sure that they said the right things. And then, like, like, next we say which things we want to actually happen. Because, like, my frustration in, like, as we were having the budget part of this into this part, and I do apologize, Mayor, it's just that the weather is doing me wrong.
No, the weather's doing me wrong too, because my eyes are on fire right now.
I didn't say that. So, like, if you look through this, like, I could put a rec center, like, on seven of these pages theoretically, like, and be like, oh, rec center, or, oh, wait a minute, rec center, you know? And so, like, the tangible benefit of having a document like this, I would assume, would be that a person that, at the beginning of this, could move to it now and think, well, under this, it would be cool if we tried to do that. And that there was a thing, so that then we had a list of potential things, so that then the people who have to figure out what the things are could tell us whether or not we could do any of these. Because I've said on more than one occasion about this, that we do have these really platitudinous desires to write these documents, and we need to be proactive about declaring what sort of city we're going to try to be. And so I'm just, I didn't mean to interrupt so much as to let you know that I may be, but that is the thing that I want, because the short answer is wherever you can find a place to put a rec center, I would like that in there, and then more signage for public safety.
But, no, I appreciate that, and that was one of the reasons why I wanted to start reading them out loud again. Because then, as, yeah, like, as, you know, because again, as you kind of read them out loud, you realize, man, this is just a lot of words, but it's not really tied to a specific action and thing. Councilmember Hanzak?
I guess I'm, I'm really struck by the power of the tool that we were just presenting this, and it's already been mostly populated. I wonder whether we could save ourselves a lot of time, and for example, we could come up with a number, like, at this point, we each sit down and we, by a deadline, a soon deadline, we could come up with, like, five to 10 specific things that are so important to us as individual council members representing the part of the city that we represent. We don't even have to decide necessarily where they fit, although we could, and if we, if we could figure out where they all fit, and each of us were to give that to the folks inputting the data in the system, they could stick it into that priorities document just for our use at this point, and then rather than going through a work session, we actually each run the tool, and we pick, we pick our priorities, and it would do analytics for us, and it would be, that would be the discussion then, is the analytics that it produced. I mean, it'd have to, each of our five or 10 top things would have to be, we might have to associate them in order to make this work with, with one of these priorities so that other people could also pick them. Because if we each did one that other people can't pick, and then we're just back at square one again. Am I making sense?
Okay.
I'm just thinking the tool itself is potentially the answer to this discussion versus trying to refine the document.
Yeah, I would say the tool is a part of, a way to kind of understand the starting points of where council members are in terms of prioritizing the priorities that we have. But the tool would still not negate the need for folks to go through these priorities and to actually say, you know what? For FY '25, we have our, we've done our work on hiring a city manager. For FY '25, we have a lot here around fiscal accountability and responsibility, but what we, we want to focus more just on budget presentation, right? So it's still going to require us to go through. One of the things that I will say is I love the idea of forcing council to use the tool to narrow yourselves down to five, and then from there, having a conversation around where did we land? In terms of timelines, because I know that folks are fading, next week, we're going to have to vote on the council, the council's budget schedule, accord on a resolution solidifying that. On the, on the calendar, our FY '25 budget priorities, goal setting, is November the 29th. So walking that back, that would mean that we would need something to present in terms of where our priorities are to the public by the 29th. something to present in terms of where our priorities are to the public by the 22nd of November. That would mean that we probably would need.
Which is to say the 20th.
Mm-hmm. So that means that we really should strive to have our, or at least an idea of where people are with priorities by the 15th.
Which is the 13th.
Which will be the 13th because we'll be out. So that would mean that by the November the 13th at the latest, and I, I actually won't give us an extra week just because dealing with the priorities last time, it was, it was hard. So that means we're looking at November the 8th. And that would give us a couple of weeks, um, before we would be able to, before we would be required on the 22nd to make sure that the consolidated priorities would be ready for, for a potential vote. That means we would probably have to have a work session on them on the 15th. That means that we would need to have our, or the 13th, I'm sorry.
On the 8th.
On the 8th, yep, yep, yep.
So may I comment, so?
Yep, we would have to have a work session on the 8th about them. Councilmember DeBala?
Yes, so there's, there's two things here. One is, I, I completely agree, and I think I might have said already that using the priorities tool for the council to do it makes perfect sense. Doesn't completely solve the question of getting a little more specific within the priorities. And there were two, at least two, three ways to go about this. One is the Rockville Budget Survey for the, for the council. And the, in the, um, so, so maybe that's a separate topic, but, because it's much more about budget and not so much about priorities per se. But, um, the other two are, are things that Assistant Deputy, say, Andrew. Mr. Baldock, I'm, I'm getting tired. Had sent around, and one is a scheme that was done in South Burlington, which was similar to those of us who were on the council before saw the projects, the major projects table with a column that had dollars and staff. You know, big deal, little deal, not hard at all. So going, going through the priority, not the big, not the big priorities, but the smaller strategies. And in getting a sense of where, getting a sense of how, how time and resource intensive they are in addition to a sense of how much of a priority they are. So that's, that's one piece. The other is, um, again, borrowing from Rockville, which by the way, is a lot bigger than we are and has more staff and more, and more money to do this. But they also, um, got much more fine-grained in their budget about, here's the strategy, here's the objective, or what we, or what we call strategy. And then here's the specific things for fiscal 25. And in, somehow we have to crosswalk the priorities with the staff tasks that are in the budget already. So in each department, each subset of a department in our budget last year and the year before, there was a block that says major tasks or major initiatives, or I forget the exact words, that listed start this, finish that, continue, some other thing. And so that's, that's the other piece of it, but they're not together. So, um, I'm not, I want to figure out what the sequence, what the best sequence is. If we go through the priorities exercise with the tool, with the balancing act tool, then we have the list narrowed down. And then maybe we have a, a subset that we can try to say, what is the, what has to happen now, what, how much is it, small, medium, large staff time? Is it small, medium, large cost? And then, then we can come back by the end of November with a much more clear idea of how it affects the fiscal 25 budget. And then maybe staff can incorporate that into, as they're doing their budget sections, they'll be able to say, oh, and one of the high priorities is housing should do number three of page five of the strategic plan that we already have. I don't know, I don't know what it says, so I'm making it up. And then they write that in there and they already know that's not a lot of money and not a lot of staff time, and the, and it is a priority of the council that, so they can know they have to put it in there. That's one way to do it. It's not the only way, but, but it seems like we have to, we still have to put the pieces together.
Yeah, I, I, I hear what you're saying, Councilmember DeBala, and I'm just, um,
Just making sure that, that doing the priority, yeah, doing the priority balancing thing is the first step, is it? Yeah, maybe it is.
Well, it, it, it's kind of like one of those things where, um, and correct me if I'm wrong, it's, the answer is it depends, right? Because it's going to depend on the project, right? So, um, environmental, maybe like the environment of sustainability as an issue is a priority. But getting the rec center done, or getting a library done, is something you really want to make sure happens, right? And that.
Getting one small task.
Right, right, yes. So if I remember correctly, um, when, during the early stages of the budget, and, and this is what I think, Councilmember DeBala, you were referring to, is the fact that the council would do its priorities, and then city staff would develop its list of tasks in small, medium, large, in terms of effort and the amount of money. I remember the former city manager gave us this list of, of those, with the designs on it. And so we have that list, right? But they, but never the two shall overlap. They didn't overlap, right? We, we had one set of priorities and we had a separate set of this thing. So, um, I do see how it could be beneficial. I think one of the things, and, and definitely, correct me if I'm wrong, but the staff have already, to some degree, developed projects that they, I mean, we, we see them all the time in the cover sheets, um, and have linked some of the major projects to, um, to certain priorities. I guess my question is, you know, are we asking for staff to do this for FY25 now, which is? But I think the, the challenge for that would be that they haven't gone far enough in the process for a budget formulation to even have those proposals. I think, you know, if, yeah. Yeah, so I mean, if anything, what you could potentially see are projects that are underway now, that are major projects and which priorities they link to. You know, particularly for those projects that may potentially have life beyond and get carried over into the 25 budget, which could potentially, um, I don't know about this financial forecast or fixed expenditures, but if there are key projects that either we anticipate having to move forward through the next couple of years or something, we want to identify those and tie them to our priority. I'm just trying to figure out a way to not have folks having to develop, uh, a project list for FY25 right now in order to feed into these priorities. But instead say, okay, here are your priorities. And here are the major projects we have underway that relate to each of the priorities that will have a life cycle that goes beyond 2024, where they will roll over into 2025. So council will have some idea of what projects in particular fall under each of the buckets. Does that make sense?
It makes a ton of sense. And, um, I don't know that, thought's not fully formulated, so forgive me. But I, I don't know that, um, at this juncture, that the, the most critical thing from a, from a staff perspective anyway is, well, I'll say it another way. I think the most critical thing for staff at this point is simply understanding what you all want to accomplish in the next fiscal year. That, you're, and so, you know, I envision that as a, as I think Councilmember DeBala said, or Councilmember Hanzak, the list, the wish list, right? I'd, I'd love to just start with the wish list. On that, wish list might be things that we're already doing. And you all know kind of the, uh, uh, at least, um, uh, in certain aspects of, of, you know, everybody has kind of this, this, this special case, this, this special interest. You know of the projects that we already have that are ongoing. Your wish list could include those projects, or it, it could include something brand new. But I think we just simply want to understand kind of what it is that you want to accomplish. And then, and, and then it's up to city staff to inform, I think, city council of, based on all of the things that we already are doing that, that, that are under these categories, which of the items that you mentioned, based on the restrictions or the scenarios that, that we've been given, can actually fit within, uh, uh, the structure for the next fiscal year. So, so I think if, if all council did at this point was gave us a list, a wish list, a, you know, of 10 items or even 15 items, I think that, that'd be a great starting point. And, and what we would do in turn is prior to, uh, I think November 29th, is try to, probably at a very high level at this point, go through, um, former budgets or even just look at our programs and projects. Because those are pretty easy to, to find. I mean, they exist in the CIP, um, I think they are detailed in the budget to some degree. And, and try to categorize those. And, and I think by November 29th, we could have some semblance of something that might be helpful. So at least at that point, we have wish lists, uh, existing projects. Shortly after, we'll have the limitations, and we can kind of combine all of that together to start putting together a picture of what FY25 might look like.
So, no, that's really helpful. So in terms of kind of after action, this is what I'm proposing. Because I do need people to prioritize this laundry list of priorities. So, um, and I guess this question is for, for Andrew. Would it be possible to kind of take Councilmember Hanzak's idea and make sure that the council has a link where we could, in the budget act, where we could prioritize our priorities in terms of the current topics and policy areas, um, that are there? And, um, and if folks could have the ability to, to, to do that and enter that into the system by October, let's just say October the 28th, then that way we'll at least know what amongst the priorities that we have. October the 28th, it's like. You tickle me. So it would be prioritizing the, um, the actual, the actual priority top levels, right? Yes, I need, I need the top levels, right? Because the strategies, the challenge is that the strategies, there are, there are a ton of strategies. So, yes.
Mayor, could I, I wonder if I wasn't clear, can I, can I? I, I, what I would, what I think I was proposing, and maybe everybody can just comment whether it would work. If we limited it, let's say to a smaller number of items to limit the amount of work to. Let's say we go with five of our top specific things that really are top of mind. Like, I really want to see some clear steps on something that happens next year. And we then take those five that we can think of, and we look in the existing priorities and figure out what each one of those is most tied to. And then we feed it to the staff or whoever, some point person on a spreadsheet. And then the, the consultant agency takes them and makes each one of them a box. If there's already a box, then we don't need to make another box. But if, if they put it on that, that priorities app thing. And then, then that way, by October 28th, we go in, and then we, we select, that way we could potentially select somebody else's top, top five as one of our top five at the end of the day. Or we might see the grouping come together in a logical way because they'll, you might see that you've got three or four that fall under one of the particular categories of priority, and that might help the staff. That, that, that's what I was trying to say. Um, I think if we try to make it more than five, it would get too hairy and it wouldn't be that useful. But it may, I, I'm just speculating, it's just an idea of how we could do it.
No, 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 I, I hear you. I think where, where I am is just trying to make sure that, you know, both of the conversations in terms of community engagement and the council priority development is in sync. So like if what, what you're proposing makes sense, like we send forward the, the laundry list of ideas and then have them turn that into, back in that into the priorities, um, linking those to the priorities. But it could very well be the case that all of our, all of our big ticket items relate to one priority. So then what does that mean in terms of our priorities as a whole? Does it mean that for FY25, we only have one part, one, you know, these five things that relate to community development is our priority? So that's why I'm trying to just make sure I'm understanding kind of how either we, 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 so initially I'm thinking, okay, well, if we can at least whittle it down to the top five priority categories, and then everybody submits their list of their wish list, then see how they merge. So it's like, okay, everyone has submitted your big ticket items, but those items, there's, you know, for the environment, for example, everyone said that's a priority, but you didn't list any hot tip, hot ticket projects related to that at all. You're, you're saying it's a priority, but you're not sending in any, um, any key activities. So that's what I'm trying to make sure that I have a, a clear understanding of. I mean, there's multiple ways to skin a cat. We can, we can definitely do it that way. But I'm also trying to see about the possibility of us not having to wait until the 29th if we want to use the balancing act program to get some resident feedback before the 29th, which means we would likely need to stick with the priorities that we currently, at least as they're currently written, to have folks weigh in. So that's why I was thinking maybe doing it twofold, having folks prioritize amongst the priorities while simultaneously sending in your wish list, regardless of what it is, and then syncing.
Just, yeah, language clarity, okay. I know what a priority is. Romanova one, advancing community belonging is a priority. These four bullets or five bullets under that, what are they? Uh, I, I'm just.
Yep, those were.
Are, are those objectives?
Nope, they were the goals, they were the goals for each.
So what you, when you said, so, so we're not, so we're, I, I get the wish list for projects. And, and I can think, we can, we personally can align them to either a, a, a priority or a goal. Or we could align it to a strategy, but.
And correct me if I'm wrong, it looked like the tool connected to the goals.
It'll, it'll drop down to the strategies, but the tool was structured around the goals.
The tool was structured around the goals. So each of these subbullets.
I just didn't know what, what to call it.
This was a long time ago. So, no, the tool captures, I remember seeing further race equity, I remember seeing higher city manager. So the tool captures each of the goals that are noted as a prior, under our priorities, not the top level buckets of advancing, like advancing community of belonging. They captured each of the goals.
So we've got two actions. One is to, uh, uh, five or whatever list number of projects, initiatives, that are, are pet projects. And then the other is to align or to identify five.
To rank order and leverage the balancing act, yeah, because you have to rank order. That's what they showed at the bottom. That's what they showed at the bottom.
Yeah, but, but not all of them, only the top five.
Only the top five. So you are identifying the top five goals and then you have to rank order them. And then separately, you send in your wish list for projects.
How many do we want to limit ourselves? Wish list of five, six, eight, what do we?
Did you say 16?
No, it said 10.
David said 10. David, do you want to go through 17 potential?
Well, we'll have to consolidate and something goes...
I mean, in my mind, it has to be council, each council member submits, let's call it 10. And then at some point, there's a discussion amongst council about which of your 10 is going to be included in the final 10.
You have arm wrestling between council members.
And I mean, I don't know if that works perfectly or not, but that's what I envision.
Okay.
And it wouldn't, you know, it's not, staff isn't going through all 70 of the items. It's council going through all 70 of the items to tell staff which you want to include it.
That's true, especially now that I know we have to go through 70 items. So I'm going to give everyone for both tasks. So Andrew, it looked like that priorities item for the Balancing Act for the most part was already done.
Yeah, that's ready to go.
All right. So everyone's homework.
I hope this comes with instructions.
Yes. Someone take a note so we can send it out afterwards. Thank you so much, Jesse. I appreciate you.
Rank order five goals and then develop a wish list of 10 wishes.
Yep, and I'll give folks a little bit more time if everybody could have that submitted to...
Submitted in the system, because I guess...
Yeah, so I can let you know when it's, when it's live and I'll send you out a link.
Okay.
When available.
One of the potential problems I see with this is that one department might get piled on and other departments may not get anything. So, you know, the sanity is going to have to come from the city manager.
Yes. But I actually think that that's, that's what we do in real life. So if, if, for example, our pet projects relate to traffic calming and that's what our residents care a lot about and that's what we're pushing for, then it goes to public works.
It would be incredibly insightful to get this kind of direction because part of, part of what I think Andrew and I have observed is there's, as we all know, we have very limited resources and a very broad array of things that we want to accomplish. And to the extent that we can kind of hyper-focus on the things that are really important, even if it means dedicating more resources to particular things and removing resources from other things, I think that's perfectly in line with what we need to accomplish budget wise, right? I mean, we don't, a lot of the discussion for us has been how do we, within very limited budget capacity, kind of do things still? And this is the way in which we can begin to think about kind of what, what things we need to put more, more dollars, more people towards and maybe where we need to start pulling some of those same things away from. And this is exactly the guidance that we might get from setting these kind of priorities.
Yeah. Councilmember DeBala?
So you, you all are talking about a wish list. I'm going to make a case for if it's not already somewhere in the priorities, it probably ought not to be mentioned. So if it's a wish list item that doesn't fall under any of the strategies, so because...
Why don't you give us, give us one out of the box, the rest have to be in.
Well, but this is pretty comprehensive and we have spent a lot of time on this.
But we're in a new bus, budget year and maybe something's come up that we hadn't foreseen. I'm just thinking.
It's possible, it's, I would prefer if we could focus a little bit.
From, from the strategies, I agree.
But, but I...
For example, if Ward Six traffic calming is really important to more than one of us, because it is, that's, I can't find the transportation section quickly, but I bet you it sits in there, even though it may not literally be listed.
It's a goal. Improve transportation, planning, design and implementation to create safer, better...
So I guess, so I guess what I'm saying is that I, I feel that we should, we should not have a wish list. We should have a list of activities that relate to work we've already done in terms of priorities and strategies. That, that's what I'm suggesting and that we do discipline ourselves.
So, so, and I will say, in my view, the only way we're going to really discipline ourselves is to force ourselves to reduce the number of goals that we have noted, prioritizing the goals within our, our priorities. And then the wish list, I do think there's value in the wish list because whether it's noted in the priority or not, we will likely go to staff and demand that it happen, right? So it is important, I think it's actually really helpful to know that if we are saying that we have certain priorities that, that fall outside of what we currently have listed as priorities, then we need, we do need to have a real conversation as council around where, where are we asking staff to focus? But, but that is why I do think it's important and why I'm sticking to, we have these goals, there are a lot of them, let's try to prioritize these goals that we have. And in reality, they should align with our key projects that we, that we want to see. So just want to kind of close this out because I know that we're, we're over time. So in terms of...
Next steps.
I'm going to give everybody an extension.
November the 1st. We'll have time. So everyone will get the link to the Balancing Act.
It'll be a great way for us to play around with it and we'll also be forced to have to prioritize our goals that are listed in our priorities. And also if folks can provide your list of no more than 10 priority activities that you all would like to have accomplished in FY25. Yes.
Question, accomplished, let's, I mean, some things can maybe be a two-year plan. I don't know. Let's say community navigators.
Paid for in the budget in FY25. Meaning, it could be two years, but we, if it's a two-year...
It would be in that budget.
It needs to be in that budget.
Maybe in two-year budgets. Yeah, I just wanted to clarify that.
Yep.
Okay, and these are actions that we want to see not necessarily currently listed in the document.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
Let's put it in there. Pick your 10. All right.
It's Christmas time.
Wouldn't it be helpful for us to also identify for the city staff or for you, whoever, which, which priority we think it fits under, just to help save some time?
Yeah, that would be helpful.
Okay, I think that would help. Okay, and is there a date?
Yes, November the 1st.
No, for the 10?
November the 1st.
Oh, all of November.
All of them.
Okay.
I, once they said 10, I said I'm on more times.
Did you really? I just want to confirm or ask you to clarify, this will be used to help us with the public engagement process as well. So how do, exactly are we going to, I mean, that's, that, that piece of it hasn't been figured out?
No, no, so the, the public engagement piece, the idea is that...
We would use this to, I mean, I...
The same way that we're having to prioritize our goals under the Balancing Act would be the same thing that we would ask our, any residents to do as well, right? So they're going to get...
I guess I thought that we would put ours forward as, well, go ahead.
So we're, we're doing the same thing that the residents are doing because keep in mind, we still have to have our priorities ready to go by the 29th. And if we don't change anything, that allows us to go live with the tool for the residents in early November as well. But one of the things that we need to make sure that we're able to do is prioritize amongst ourselves, give folks enough time for this laundry list and be able to receive any information you may want to use to engage your residents, because I still have to have this conversation. We still need to be ready to vote by the 29th. So that would mean that we would also have to have a work session in the middle of November. And so by that time, you will have had residents that can engage in the tool. You have made your decisions around where you want to prioritize. You've provided your laundry list of things and all of this information can help with determining what the priorities should include.
Were you envisioning the exact same request or language for the residents? In other words, we're, we know this stuff. We have, and we can pull from strategies that we're familiar with as our pet projects or whatever. Would the, and I'm just kind of wondering what kind of, how do we educate the community into terms of coming up with what tasks they want? Or you're, they're not going to do the task side?
They're not going to do the task.
Okay, that would clarify that, makes sense.
Yeah. So this is really, this is really for, this is really for council members to get a, to have a opportunity to give staff a little bit more insight in terms of what your wish list that should align with our priorities but may not. And we want to know that because what we, what we can, what we may want to have happen on paper may not necessarily align with what we are asking our staff on day-to-day basis to spend their time on and get done. And so we need to make sure that these, at least that we have a conversation around what our true priorities in terms of the activities that we want staff to spend their time on, that we're expecting to spend city monies on. Do our priorities really reflect that? Okay? All right. So I think, I think we're done.
I, I have a question.
Yep.
You know, I know that this is, we're kind of going into new territory and I don't think something that's been done a lot as far as using the computer to kind of rank our, our choices. And I'm just curious of whether this has any implications on the freedom of information or the public information, you know, being transparent? Because if we had this conversation through email...
Yes.
That would be accessible to the, to the community, whereas what we're doing here is individuals, that maybe there needs to be some reporting out of this that provides that transparency.
Yes. So I know that I did ask our city attorney about even using Google Docs. I wasn't able to use Google Docs. But I do just want to triple check that we could all use this, the platform.
I would think there'd just be some reporting requirements maybe to show what individuals chose or something like that.
Yeah, we can certainly follow up with Skip and, and ask the question. I think there's, yeah, there's two considerations, right? The one is there's the open meeting question and then there's the public records question, which are separate. But the open meeting question is, I think the public records question is probably pretty straightforward that this would become a public document. But on the open meeting question, that's something I, yeah, we'll have to check with Skip.
And which case, I would think the, the interest would be how did individuals, individual council members respond?
Oh, I see.
I'm just guessing.
Yeah.
But Skip's much better than answering that.
Okay.
I think, Mayor, just in closing, just if I could provide some guidance in terms of what I think would be most helpful from a city staff perspective. When you're thinking about the, your list of activities, projects, programs, system improvements, you know, it, it doesn't need to be limited to anything other than, meaning the only thing that I would exclude is kind of the normal operations. And what I mean by normal operations is if, you know, the, the basic, the basic things that in that particular department is tasked to do. So I'm thinking public works. Public works is going to pick up trash, right? So I know that's kind of a low-level example, but not things that are kind of run-of-the-mill regular tasks. Even, you know, the installation of speed bumps is not something that I would say falls into the category of special activities. However, a traffic study, like last week's conversation for Ward Six that involves a consultant or might involve significant staff time outside of their normal operations would be something that I would mark as an activity. So, so I think the framing there is just kind of outside of the norm, is how I would put it simply. And then when you are describing the activity that you list, please do describe it in such detail that we really understand what it is that, that you're trying to communicate to us. Because I think the task for city staff is going to be, as we noted before, is what, what resources need to go behind that particular activity? And we're going to be weighing that against all of the other things that, that particular department might be doing in FY25 as well. And I also wonder if you all are open to a staff list of things?
Yes.
Because I think we, yeah, because we have, we, I think there are some particularly system issues that council may not be fully aware of that city staff feel are really critical, even maybe critical to some of the activities that you might have on your list. And so I would love to provide you all with a list of 10 critical things that we want to do in FY25.
That would be...
That'd be great.
That would be useful.
Probably more valuable than what we're...
All right, great, that's good news.
Councilmember DeBala?
I was just going to say, and we had one before, I meant to bring this up earlier. This is really useful and necessary because the first staff leadership list, whenever that was, January 22 or something, was very helpful in, in highlighting things that we didn't even know about that we need to make priorities.
All right, Councilmember Stevens?
Good night.
Okay, all right. Thank you all so much. All right, we're going to call this meeting adjourned.